Good. Okay, that's a good look.
Okay, Mayor, we are live on YouTube, so good to start when you are.
Very good. Okay, it is exactly 5:00 PM. All right, everybody, welcome to the Federal Way Special City Council Meeting for purposes of the consideration of the proposed 2021 and 2022 biennial budget study session. We are obviously remote still via Zoom. And we have a number of budget presentations, but before we do that, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
of the United States of America. And to the Republic
The Republic.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
Which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
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 With liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
It's like a camp song. Great job, you guys. All right. That is where we're doing it, doing it that way. It's, you know, you kind of get everybody kind of coming in at different times. Let's, okay. Um, we're getting the hang of it. Speaking of which, let's, this is our second day of budget presentations. We had a great presentation, set of budget presentations yesterday. Um, how long were we yesterday? We started at five and we ended about nine?
Ten.
Nine, ten, but
No, I think we ended up at ten.
Nine thirty?
I'd say ten. I think I agree with Lydia, closer to ten. Yeah.
All right, closer to ten. Okay. Okay, well, we've got some more important work to do. We've got department presentations first by the municipal court, our esteemed Honorable Judge Dave Larson, then we'll have a law department presentation by our city attorney, Ryan Call. Then the police department by Chief Andy Wong. Then community development. We'll have a break after um, Council President wisely suggested that. I think a few minutes of respite before we get started with the next department, which is community development. And Brian Davis, our Community Development Director, will present and then IT, information technology by none other than the esteemed Thomas Fitchner, our IT Director, newly minted IT Director. With that, why don't we go ahead and get started with our, the Honorable Judge Dave Larson. Your Honor?
Uh, thank you. I'm, see if I can share the screen properly and I think I got it figured out. You all see the PowerPoint. Um, so Sue White, you all, you all good?
Yep, now we are.
Yeah, Sue White's online with us and Judge Robertson's on sabbatical during the month of September, so she won't be joining us. Uh, she's enjoying herself uh, on sabbatical. So, um, Sue and I will handle it tonight. And wanted to start with, um, it's not advancing. Oh, here we go. So, um, you know, the court, we've always seen ourselves try to see ourselves as an asset and we continue to do that. We try to be an asset for the community and a value added to the Federal Way community because because the justice system is kind of the, like, we're always, I would say, we're the offensive lineman of government. We only get noticed when we jump off sides, but play an important role in trying to keep the public peace and and both within civil infractions and crimes committed in the city of Federal Way. And we try to make it so that so we have no repeat customers. I always say that we run a repair shop, not a junkyard. We're trying to keep our community moving forward and trying to keep people from coming back by having happier lives, not being in court. Uh, so Judge Robertson just stopped being the president of our Judges Association statewide, and she's now a member of the Board of Judicial Administration. I'm a member of a number of committees and a number of things that influence uh, policy statewide for the courts. And so we're both pleased to have that voice statewide in terms of the ability to to both affect things statewide and benefit us here in Federal Way. So kudo, I want to start out with some kudos. IT did a wonderful job with remote access for our clerks because we had to keep open. We had to stay open. We get about with photo enforcement, everything about forty thousand cases a year. Uh, we, we have to maintain our doors open because if we don't, then everything shuts down for for our, in our community. Um, so with the remote access and then also the recent and Mayor Farrell and, and Aday and whoever else participated the with the, with the grants to be able to install the, the video equipment, all the equipment in the courtroom so that we can have Zoom hearings and and maximize our ability to continue to operate in these times is great. Uh, we, we, our doors remained open the entire time. Uh, we were restricted. We were really only exposed to uh, handle cases where there was a danger to the community or some, some real manifest reason to, uh, so, uh, I'll go over some of the statistics in just a minute, more, more estimates because we really don't have clear statistics. But we didn't have jury trials for four months and unlike other courts, and again, it's because of the, the planning that went into our city hall, the fact that we have three wonderful courtrooms, one large courtroom and one medium. It's like the Papa Bear, Mama Bear, Baby Bear Courtrooms, you know? Uh, the, we were able to have the courtroom one operate with, with maintaining social distance and having enough jurors in there to now convene, to, we've convened four jury trials since July 1st. Other courts across the state have not been able to convene jury trials because of restrictions. So so we are fortunate in our city to be able to have done that. Um, our challenge is we had to continue thousands of hearings and multiple, multiple times. So if you remember, the governor's order was through May. So we continued all our hearings thinking, well, we can start in May. Well, then they got extended, so we had to, you know, extend all the hearings again. And there's, these are thousands and thousands of cases. We see anywhere between four hundred to six hundred cases a week. And so you can imagine how many cases have to be rescheduled, the, the the, uh, the staff hours that have to go into that and everything else. New charges were bottlenecked, any, any uh, not new violent charges like domestic violence and things of that nature, but theft, suspended license charges, driving offenses. A DUIs, they were still filed. Uh, they're considered a little bit more of a safety risk, but there's some charges bottlenecked and, and law can probably present on that a little bit better than I can in terms of how that's going to be cleared up because the prosecutor controls when they file and, and what they file. Uh, so one of the big things is that warrants were not supposed to be issued unless there was, again, a reason to do so for public safety. And so there's a number of people that were failing to appear and each time they failed to appear, we had to resummon them. That went in and a lot of people don't have addresses and everything. So what we did in our court, uh, effective September 1st is we've done something that we're kind of ahead of the curve on is we've allowed people to opt in to receive all their paperwork by email. So homeless people, uh, et cetera, don't, that don't have addresses can actually get noticed for their court dates and things of this nature. So that's going to help a lot in terms of what the failure to appear and warrants and, and we can, if you wonder about what that means, though, you can, we can talk about that in a little bit if you have some questions on that, but but there's some, uh, also staffing issues due to indirect impacts. A lot of our clerks have school-aged children. So they have their homeless kids. And so we've had to tackle a lot of those issues and deal with those issues because of COVID. And then, uh, so, you know, we're more and more hearings are being on Zoom. By the way, uh, we, I always try to take adversity and turn it into opportunity. And here we have, uh, people that are taking half days off work to save forty dollars on their speeding ticket. Or people that have suspended licenses, but we make them drive to court. You know what I mean? So we're able to have a lot of these hearings on Zoom. So Zoom is, is a positive thing. But then we have some defendants that don't have the availability of technology. So what we've done is obviously keep the court open. Under Article 1, Section 22 of our state constitution, a defendant in a criminal case has a right to be, to defend their case in person. So we keep the courts open for folks. If they don't have the technology, be able to come here and we enforce masks. We enforce social distancing, all things are supposed to. And then there's going to be financial impacts. You know, the limitations on, uh, uh, the court is not allowing us, the Supreme Court's not allowing us to issue FTAs on, on on tickets and things of this nature, which means that it's impacted our ability. We're not in the revenue business in our court, but, uh, but there is, there are limitations and both limitations because people are out of work and can't pay as well as some of the things that we're we've done, uh, both volitionally, locally, as well as ordered by the Supreme Court to do. So it has affected some of the issues regarding um, collections of fines. Uh, other COVID impacts, the community court, uh, Valley Cities, uh, who, which was our, uh, they came in for, at no cost and served as our care coordinator. They withdrew, uh, because of COVID. The library, we, we were just in the process in April, April 6th, exact, to be exact, we were going to start. Community Court was going to be at the public library and there was going to be a community resource center so we could link people right away to things. Uh, but because of COVID, the library terminated their current community resource center. So we don't have that. Right now, we're in the process of looking at other options uh, for, um, for services, but, uh, it's, um, we still proceed with community court, but we don't have those linkages that are absolutely crucial to, for continued success. With our jail alternatives, Department of Corrections, their work crew programs on hold, uh, SCRAM alcohol monitoring, most people can't afford to pay for it, which means the the court pays, we pay a very, a small fraction of the cost that is normally charged to a defendant that can pay. But it's still out of, out of pocket. If we want to keep somebody in SCRAM, just in case you don't know, is alcohol monitoring. So people that either in a domestic violence case or DUI, if alcohol's contributory, if we, if we have concerns that they're not going to be able to control their alcohol consumption, we put, it's a thing on, that goes on their, a bracelet goes on their ankle that measures alcohol coming out of their skin. And it devises us if they're consuming. And, uh, so it's absolutely essential in some cases, in many cases to have that uh, both to prevent domestic violence as well as prevent people from driving under the influence. And as a result, uh, that's going to be a drain. Day reporting, which is a very effective way to punish kind of people at the early stages or for sometimes minor probation violations. That's limited because we can only have so many people in court at a time and we have to actually plan it out now very good, very, very carefully so that we comply with everything. The Kent Work Release Program is terminated, not necessarily because of COVID, but because of budget constraints. And I think Commander Schwan can probably expand on that a little more uh, if, if he needs to. Uh, so the King, King County Work Release Program is closed until at least January. So one thing beneficial, uh, for the, the jail budget, at least for you guys, is the, uh, because we can't because we're not able to serve as many warrants uh, because of COVID as well as, um, uh, other constraints, um, we don't have as many people in jail. And so the jail alternatives, that's kind of an offset there. Uh, but, uh, once that lifts, uh, and we're, and the warrants are served more regularly, uh, it's going to be imperative that we have these jail alternatives. Uh, we have, we just got, what, three weeks ago, got contacted by the King County Adult and Juvenile Detention. Uh, they have a program and it's been something I've wanted for a number of years and I've been harping on it. I wrote a paper last year called Justice Involved Therapy to Intervention. I've written a strategic plan in 2018 talking about this very issue. What they're really doing is the frustration is, is that when you want to create a community court or create programs, you're creating a parallel system and there's people already eligible for, for benefits that that, so we, it's the linkages that, so what King County did, and they approached us on this, is through Asian Counseling and Referral Services. Um, they, um, they get same-day assessments, wraparound services, uh, and then I've arranged with the transport officers. So if somebody's in jail and we're releasing them to this program, they'll drop them off in Kent. It's located in Kent. Because they got the Kent Jail. And you got Issaquah. So it's between the Kent Jail and Issaquah. So they'll drop them off. I'm working with the police department now. I've talked to a couple of folks about a catch and release warrant program. Where if the, if the person qualifies, they can be dropped off of this program instead of going to jail. And then they'll give it, give them that one opportunity to engage. And if they don't, the next time the warrant issues, they won't get that same consideration. And then, um, uh, we're, um, just a minute. And we're working on other benefits too. I, I had to move my little camera to see my screen. Um, the, uh, other benefits, including, um, the ability to refer people, uh, that are on, um, probation and that type of thing. Because this is a pre-trial release program. It's designed to keep people out of jail and, and engage them in services and, and meet their needs. And, uh, but they're being flexible enough with us where we can use it for a number of things, uh, including pre-trial cases, maybe even our community court. Um, so it's brand new, but, uh, the, the budget impact to the city is exactly zero. Uh, unless you quantify the time dropping off the people at the facility if we, if somebody's released from jail. Um, et cetera. I'm also working with people in the community about potentially, uh, providing transportation to, so in other words, if we have an arraignment calendar, a number of people are asked to go to this particular program that will have actually transportation to take them to the program in Kent. And the benefit of this is when somebody's ready, the biggest frustration we have in court is when somebody's ready for change. And, and there are a lot of people ready for change. They want, they're, they're now in charge of the crime. They, they're feeling it at the low end of the, it's a low E for them. And so they want to start dealing with their issues. And the problem we have with availability of resources, that we can go tell people to go do that or they can voluntarily do it, but they can't get in for two or three weeks. They can't. And then in the meantime, they relapse, they lose the they lose their hope, they, whatever, and then they're right back to ground zero. So this, this idea of getting people engaged immediately when they're motivated is absolutely essential. And so this program will help us do that. And, uh, and, uh, it's excellent, the fact that, uh, and oh, by the way, this will benefit all 10 South King County Municipal Courts, not just Federal Way. So it's a way, something I've wanted to do for a long time too, is get the cities to work together. Uh, get the courts to work together to utilize the same type of resources. So we're not duplicating efforts. Uh, this is one of those things that'll help, help that happen. Um, we try to be, continue to be stewards. Uh, we were seventeen thousand, except in 2019, I think, for the first time, could be wrong, Aday would know more than me. We're over budget, but we were about forty-eight thousand dollars, a little under forty-eight thousand dollars over budget on interpreters. Interpreters are mandated by law. So actually, we were about thirty thousand plus or minus under budget if you took the interpreter budget out. Uh, that interpreter budget is, um, is something that is just one of those mandates. We have to do it. We get some level of subsidy from the state. I can't tell you exactly how much. Uh, but this year, because of COVID, it, you know, we're, we're under budget if we annualized the, what we've done through August 31st. Uh, but we're, hearings are being held again and, uh, and we're going to be incurring a lot of interpreter costs and everything.
Yeah.
And so that's probably, it's probably going to, we're probably going to be okay this year if, uh, you know, but it may go, if, if, actually, if you, if you took, um, and just projected, you know, the fact that we're going to have hearings through the end of the year, we might be about twenty thousand over budget on that. Otherwise, we try to, try to keep everything within our means. Um, and then, uh, the wish list, uh, uh, one thing I'm not sure if the council's aware and, and Thomas, uh, I know he's aware because he's the one that told us. Uh, Journal Technologies, the, the, uh, the provider of our case management system, Justware, informed us earlier this year that, uh, they're not going to provide service or maintenance to that particular program as of January 1st. The Administrative Office of the Courts, AOC, is in the process, and they've been in the process for a number of years and uh, with mixed results, trying to develop a case management system. And it looks like it, there might be something in the middle of the next year. So at least at this point, our decision is kind of wait and see what AOC does instead of incurring a lot of cost to develop a system that, that, uh, that can be, that would be replaced by a statewide system. Uh, we, there, there's a relatively moderate amount of funding that we need for automated, automated notification of court dates and, and payment due dates. Uh, the reason for this, and the reason it's so important is because warrants are bad for everybody. They're bad for the defendant because they get arrested. They're bad for police because you never know. And it's an officer safety issue. You never know the last time somebody wants to go to jail. So all of a sudden, the officer's out arresting somebody for a relatively minor crime or DUI or domestic violence or whatever it is. And they don't want to go to jail. And so we don't, uh, I think officers want to serve them any more than people want to get them. And the court certainly doesn't want to issue them. But a lot of our FTAs have to do with the fact that people changes, change addresses, don't tell us. Or they don't have an address. They don't show up for court, so we summon them. Or when the initial litigation starts, we summon them and they don't show up. And so the idea of this is, once somebody does get in the system, we can, and this has been done in other courts for a number of years. They can receive a text message saying you got court tomorrow. They can receive a text message saying your payments due. And so what ends up happening, both with the warrants, it, it reduces the number of FTAs because people come to court. And on payment due dates, there's, with traffic violation, traffic crimes and traffic tickets. If you don't pay, then, uh, your, your license gets suspended in, in a lot of different, uh, a lot of different ways that gets suspended. And then you get it suspended, then it ends up happening. Now you committed a crime and you're arrested again. But two, about, about sixty percent of our arraignment calendar on Tuesday mornings is people driving suspended licenses. Their car gets impounded. A lot of things happen because of this. And the amount of effort in the courts to deal with these things is significant. So the idea is to decrease defaults or FTAs or, and decrease warrants with the automated system. What I'd like to see and is, is, is expansion of our therapeutic programs to, to try to reach first-time offenders. Uh, that's something we have to talk about with the prosecutor and defense attorneys and everything else because first time, if you can get somebody at the first time they ever show up for court and they have an addiction or mental illness or some barrier, uh, you can reach them then and avoid a lot of pain later. But, uh, that's something relative, that's, I've been wanting for quite some time. It's not because of all the things with community court that's been going on during COVID and everything else, uh, haven't really been able to even discuss it internally. Then again, competitive court staff salaries, we don't want people to leave because they get paid elsewhere. Then finally, structured community service. Uh, as of August 31st, we're owed fifteen million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, forty-five dollars in unpaid fines and costs. And, um, it's something that it benefits, if we can allow, if we have community service within the city and it's structured in such a way where it benefits the places like the city itself, the school district, the fire district, Lake Haven, nonprofits. Then we can start to provide incentives to people. And this is the difference between community service as a punishment and community service as paying a fine is as a punishment, you have to do it. Right? In community service, it's an option. So if we gave people an incentive to do things locally by paying them, by allowing them, because right now we allow them to have fifteen dollars an hour against their unpaid fines. If we made it so it was twenty bucks an hour, if you did it with an approved nonprofit or with the city or whatever, then we would, it's not going to be money that comes in for fines, but right now they're not getting paid the fines anyway. So basically, there'd be a benefit to the community. Uh, and one of the problems, and it should never, and this is an issue, a justified issue by departments in the city is there is that if we did that in the city, there'd need to be somebody coordinating and there just isn't the staffing. There, uh, one of the ideas is a nonprofit to manage uh, some of that. So the nonprofit would basically be referred to the nonprofit and they do that. But those are the kind of things we need to talk about, uh, that I've wanted for a number of years. That, and the budget impact here is that if we decide to do it internally, then we'd need some, some kind of coordination. But that's different than community service that's a punishment. We could legitimately tell people when you're punished, go, you can only go to these places to do community service. We haven't done that, but we could start doing that. But we just need that stable of folks that we approve, capable of, that are willing and able to keep, to take people that have criminal records, number one. And number two, uh, 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 be able to be stewards and marshals of the time that the person's spending and be able to report it to us. So, um, I think that's about, um, it. And so there's a, is there any questions?
Okay, um, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Council President Honda. And then we've got Councilmember Coach Moore and Councilmember Asefa Dawson.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Judge Larson, for being here today. I have three questions. One, the DOC work, work crew on hold, do you know when that's going to start up again?
No, I, no idea. They, um, they, I know that, um, it, my guess is it's not going to be, the rest of the year, we won't have it, is my assumption. We've, we've kept track of that and Sue is online. Uh, Stacy Scarpaccia, our probation director is really in charge of that. But Sue, you know anything? But I think she's on
Sorry, Judge, I had to, I had to mute Sue because we got feedback. So, Sue, can you make sure and turn down your Zoom computer? And just talk to the phone.
Oh, okay.
And by the way, while Sue's doing that, she brought the DOC work crew to the city when she came onboard as the court administrator. Excellent.
Thanks. Yeah, our, um, work crew for DOC has told us that until all of the different counties and jurisdictions have been opened up again, because some of them are not at the higher levels yet, they won't implement the work crew until everyone is open. So they didn't give us a date. We're just waiting until the governor says that it's okay to open.
Okay. Um, thank you. My next question is on the, uh, pre-trial assessment. Um, the new program. You say drop off in Kent and I'm trying to understand what that is. Are they being dropped off into a program where they a physical location where they're getting services and they stay there or are they, um, what do you mean by dropping off in Kent?
It's a outpatient and it's basically to drop off. It's so the initial visit, they get their assessment that day. It might be, so the assessment would both be for, you know, substance use disorder, uh, for mental illness, uh, any other assessments that may be also assessed for social services and be plugged into those. Um, transportation isn't it, they, they located this program in Kent. And one of the issues I brought up when we, when it came is this transportation. And that's going to be somewhat of an impediment. But, um, if, uh, if we can figure out transportation
I'm on a council meeting.
Like I said, if we can figure out the transportation issues.
I have to talk to you later.
Sue, you're the, um, so if we can figure out the transportation issues, because we're getting people down to Kent. We got to get them back if they're living here or, um, you know, or, you know, that has to be an issue. I mean, it has to be resolved. And some people are going to still have their licenses and be able to drive themselves. But, but this, but the, this is something that's a gift in a way. I've also talked to them about being able to partner with local treatment agencies so that somebody could be assessed there. And then somebody like Intercept or somebody here could actually do the treatment. So they're in that, in that prime, in that, in that discussion with them now to see if we can pull that off. So, and because, because the whole thing is we got to get rid of silos and we got to be able to integrate things a little bit better. And, uh, that would help greatly.
Okay, and my final question is on the fines. That's a lot of, uh, fines that need to be paid back to the city. How many years did it take to, um, get to this total and how many people does this represent?
Well, it's, it, it's twenty years the court spent in existence this year. By the way, we didn't celebrate anniversary. It's twenty years this year. Um, and
Congratulations.
Yep, and the, um, um, so those judgments can be renewed every ten years. The judgment's good for ten. So some of these may have been somebody from 2000. Uh, I doubt it. Uh, but it's, it's accumulated over a number of years. I couldn't tell you how many people are involved in that, but, uh, but it's not something that is a month's worth of revenue. It's, or, uh, you know, it's, it's been, it's accumulated over time. And again, every ten years, the collection agency asks to renew judgment and we renew judgment routinely to keep it going. We're getting more and more pressure from the Supreme Court and from other things not to charge fines, uh, not to charge costs because of inaccuracy. Uh, actually, some, some case law that, that prohibits us from doing that in criminal cases.
Thank you. I thank you for what you do and I hope community court, court gets going again. I know that that was on its way to be really successful for our citizens, so.
Well, I don't want to mislead because community court is still happening. I, in fact, I had community court today. We still meet with people. We still try to do what we can. But we just don't have that care coordinator there that makes it as, uh, as, as effective. For instance,
Okay.
The Valley Cities there, we can ask them at that moment and they can look on their computer how somebody's doing. Without that there, we're hampered a little bit. It's not going to stop us, though. There's a commitment to it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Coach Moore.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, I'm wondering, because this would be a question for both you and the judge. On the fifteen million dollar, two hundred and twenty-four dollars in fines. You know, if we renew those, um, judgments, we're talking about, perhaps you and the mayor, uh, Judge Larson, could talk about what we're doing in the budget. We have two litter picker-up folks that we're going to be hiring. So rather than hiring the litter folks, why wouldn't we want to have this uh, be an option for those people who owe back fees, especially those that are in collection? They might want to get that cleared up. And then, uh, move forward with maybe the nonprofit to manage the litter pickup. That would save on our budget and that would, um, then clear your fines from your budget.
Right. And I certainly didn't mean to step on anybody's toes when it comes to other programs that people are trying to start for, for beautifying the city. Right. And I certainly didn't mean to step on anybody's toes when it comes to other programs that people are trying to start for for beautifying the city and everything, but. Uh, certainly it's, it's something that we've wanted for a number of years and 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 again. It's because we, I mean, you can't go to the Parks Department and say, hey, by the way, you got this new thing without giving them anything. And you can't go to Public Works and say, oh, by the way, you gotta manage this thing. So there, there um, so that's where the impediment's been and the court doesn't have the bandwidth to manage it either, uh, but.
Yeah.
But as far as looking at our options, uh, certainly if if there's a. Maybe it's five people picking up litter, two people that are getting paid and three people that are working out fines. You know, I don't know, but certainly that conversation I think needs to be had. Because uh, you know, it may be a way to, to, everybody can have the, you know, we can have the, the egg and the. And the chicken.
And the omelet. Yeah, exactly. Uh, your honor, actually, and and councilor Coachmore, there's so much work that needs to be done in regard to picking up that the two people. Need help and they need assistance. So I think it's a, it's an and, it's not an or. Um, and I also think you need somebody that's that's full time and we've already got, we did the budget amendment for the two and then we purchased a, a vehicle for that purpose. But what we're concerned about, and I think that's what um, what E J was talking yesterday and what Brian will probably talk about uh, tonight. Is that with the launch of of Eyes on Federal Way, we, it's unknown exactly how much of a demand we're going to have. But it could be substantial. And there's been concern here, yeah, there is. That's what I said. I think it is great that we know where it's at. But it's also, um, it could be a great, another uh, a lot of additional work. So I think it's an and, not an or.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I think that would help both the city and uh, the court.
Well, there's other, there's other groups that could benefit. The uh, the senior center, I visited there, the idea of having people do community service in the senior center. And again, with incentives, like if you go, if you go wherever you want, it's fifteen bucks an hour. But if you go to places that we've screened and approved. And it's twenty bucks an hour against your fines. And so all of a sudden, we're benefiting. Local nonprofits as well as the city. So it doesn't have to just be the city. And back in the day, uh, the school district was interested, the, the uh. Uh, uh, Lake Haven, I believe, was interested and the fire district already has people paint, like paint fire hydrants. Uh, but I don't know. So it could be a kind of this community type based thing that.
That'd be great. Let's talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Asefa Dawson.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, thank you, Judge, for the presentation as well as the work that you do in our community and to make our community whole. Um, because sometimes we believe people who commit crimes are broken and um, so. What you're doing is really healthy and I appreciate it. Um, and I also like the new programs that you have, yeah, that you talked about. Um, this morning I was at the regional law and sa- safety and justice um, committee meeting. And two things that came up were, one is the lead program, law enforcement assisted diversion, and then the youth rights ordinance. Um, just wanted to get a feel from you about these programs and. What you think and if it's something that we could consider in the future.
Well, that paper that I talked about, Justice Involved Therapeutic Intervention, discusses what's called the Sequential Intercept Model. And the sequential intercept model is a method by which you, you, at any point in the process, you're diverting people to the, to, to address underlying causes. Not a guarantee that'll make any difference with every individual, but to the extent you can be aggressive about getting people. It could be a social contact police have, where all of a sudden they're referring somebody. It could be in pro- all the way in probation, we're referring somebody. But should be a continuum of care that you can, you can link up with at any point in the process. So that we're using, for instance, if the police use lead, ideally, community court would use the same mental health providers, the same social service people. So we can see people on a continuum. And uh, and that's, and then you maximize resources and everything else. But lead is a tool in the toolbox. To try to get people diverted to uh, to where they, to, to deal with their underlying causes. Because otherwise you're just treating symptoms. If we're stopping the person from trespassing. Uh, because they have a mental illness, they don't know where they are and they've been trashed past. Uh, you know, we're treating symptoms. If we get them to someplace where they can get in compliance with medication or whatever. Then, then we can at least deal with that. If they continue to commit crimes, then they're just somebody that. Is just going to commit crime and you gotta deal with that with the punitive system, right? But lead again is a useful tool in the toolbox and that's a law enforcement decision. It's not a court. That'll be law enforcement decision. But I, my, my dream would be that we all work together to develop that continuum of care. Where we can all use whatever provider to get them and then. Uh, use crisis centers or whatever else too, because uh, there are people, and I see them every day, there are people that truly. Want to change their life and don't want to be in the system. And we fail them if we can't get them to where they need to go. There's also people that will commit crimes that deserve the punitive system too. It's the difference between somebody being a can't. Or they can't help themselves or somebody that won't, or they won't change their behavior. And then, and there's a. Benefit to use uh, the punitive system and therapeutic system in both, in. In therapeutic system in one case and the punitive system in the other case.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, uh, thank you, your honor.
I appreciate it. And I'm going to let you guys go and hey, uh, it's always a pleasure and um, we'll keep the conversation going. I, I really think that we all. All of us have, share that uh, passion for serving our people of our community. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, bye.
Okay. Um, all right, now we are off onto the law department and this will be um, uh, Ryan Call, our city attorney. Ryan?
The floor is yours. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. Let me share my screen. So my name is Ryan Call. I'm the city attorney. I'll be presenting the law department budget. If you. Have your budget books, the law department section starts on um, C forty seven. And most of the numbers that I'll be presenting are summaries of kind of the stuff that you find in the, the budget book. What's going on here? There we go. So first off is our org chart. Um, we have twelve point five employees that work in the law department. Those employees are divided up into essentially two sections and then we have a third duty that's not. Really staffed. We have one, one employee that does it, uh, and myself. So um, Tanya Proctor is our lead paralegal. She also works as the alternate delegate to W C I A, which is our insurance pool. She also works to collect city claims against uh, for damages suffered by the city. That uh, either other people's insurance or or sometimes uh, other ways to collect money against people who have damaged city uh, property. Um, the civil section, it consists of. Tanya works there as well, and then we have two assistant city attorneys and one full-time legal assistant that supports them. Uh, this year, Mark Worthman departed from the city. He was a deputy city attorney. We did not hire another deputy, instead. Uh, hired an assistant city attorney. So there was some savings in salary there. Um, civils duties are basically everything noncriminal. We review all the contracts of the city, advise city staff. Um, and staff, council and commission meetings. We defend all the claims against the city and uh, basically do all the legal stuff that's not criminal. Uh, the criminal prosecution section has more people. Um, it's staffed by four prosecutors. Led by Jennifer Castleton, who's the chief prosecutor, and then she has two kind of general purpose city prosecutors. And then one special purpose domestic violence prosecutor who does only D V cases. Um, the domestic violence section is also supported by a domestic violence advocate. The criminal section has one paralegal and then um. Two other employees, basically, uh, one's full-time, one's half-time, uh, that are legal assistants. And then we have uh, point five. Uh, F T E that's administrative support. It's actually a little less than point five. Um, he's a uh, a temporary employee, does minimum wage. Uh, he's, he makes minimum wage and has no benefits, but does a lot, a ton of our uh, filing and scanning and all the things that the city. Um, that the, the, not just our department, but some other departments need done. Um, just to be clear, the prosecution section, sometimes people don't understand that. The city only has jurisdiction over misdemeanors, so they only prosecute misdemeanors committed by adults in the city. And the prosecutors do also appear on infractions if there's an attorney on the case. And then the last section is the risk management um, part of, of the department. Uh, we manage all claims. And in, up until recently, we were managing all those claims internally and then would also manage outside litigation council to handle um, defending lawsuits. We have since shifted, recently shifted to an insurance pool under W C I A. So right now we're kind of in between. We're half, half of a. Half of the stuff we're doing is internal and we still have to do all the work internally and. But the new stuff is getting turned over to W C I A. So we're seeing a lot of um, improvements with our shift over to the insurance pool. This slide is a summary of stuff that you'll see on C forty nine if you go to the budget book. The budget book has a lot of detail in it and sometimes our department can be confusing in that. Um, a lot of our salaries are split between proposition one and the general fund. And then risk is also included sometimes in like the pie charts and things like that. And risk, although it is in our department and it's part of our budget, it's an entirely separate part. So I tried to break it out so you see. What the lawyers are actually costing, like just the legal services for the city versus the risk pool. So. You see here, there's been a progression uh, of. Somewhat, you know, moderate increases um, in the legal co- the cost of just the legal uh, part of the department. Um, most of that has been increasing salaries to match the market. Um, our, our department, the attorneys at least are all, I think, my opinion is that we're all fairly close to the market rate. Um, little bit below, but we're not anywhere near as low as some of the other city employees. And that's been because we had a lot of turnover in law department. And in order to hire replacements for, for the people that we needed to replace, we had to get up to market. Uh, looking at the risk fund, um, it's pretty clear that there's a, a big jump in twenty twenty. This has been a very bad year for the city as far as risk goes. We've had a few high, very expensive payouts on lawsuits. So historically, we've been closer to this one point four or five number, one point four or five million number in, in our budget for the risk fund. Um, and we expected to go back down to that number. Um, so. The risk fund will be broken out a little bit more in detail in the next slide so that you can see a little bit how. Uh, those numbers are come, uh, how I come up with those numbers. Um, there are no additional requests in. My budget. Um, most of the increase in costs you see here are just incremental costs. Due to um, step increases in salaries or just inflation. And we do have some increases because um, our. Um, premiums for W C I A will go up somewhat in the future. So this slide is not all of the expenditures of the department, but it's some of the more significant ones. And I wanted to just show you kind of the trend. Uh, that we've been seeing and then what we're budgeting for in twenty and twenty one. I'm sorry, twenty one, twenty two. Twenty two isn't listed just because the numbers are pretty much identical. There's a very small increase. And um, but this is kind of just to illustrate the pattern that we've been seeing. So the first category there is contract attorneys. These are not litigators. These are not people that were, well, they can be litigators, but these are not people that are for tort defense. These are not claims that would be against our insurance. These are things like land use, um, construction defect, defense or, or, or uh. Mostly defense, uh, construction, contract defense. Uh, if we have personnel issues or personnel. Uh, if we need special advice on personnel issues, sometimes we'll go to a, a specialist attorney for advice. Uh, basically all non-tort litigation is in this category. Um. We've seen an increase in the cost of this over time because of just lawyers are more expensive now than they were uh, in twenty nineteen. So we're asking to keep the budget as it currently stands um, in the twenty twenty budget. The contract attorney risk fund is something that we hope to see go, largely go away. Um, as we transition to the W C I A insurance pool. This is a service that is now included in the premium that we pay to W C I A. So twenty nineteen, you see that we, we spent. Uh, four hundred and seventy four thousand dollars on attorney's fees to defend tort litigation. So if you add four seventy four to the premium, which is down below risk premiums of five oh five, you'll see that. We, we already spent more money in attorney's fees and the premium than just our premium cost us in twenty twenty. And that's a trend we saw going back. Uh, as we analyzed how much it would have cost us to be in the pool for the last five years and. We would have been ahead every year, except for, uh, every year if we had been in the insurance pool. So um. Hopefully the contract attorney uh, category will, will go away. We do have some costs in twenty twenty. Um, because we still have a few cases that are old cases that predate our joining W C I A. Um, the general liability risk claims, the, this is the, the money we use to actually pay payout claims. Um, we budgeted in night, twenty nineteen, two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. We only had to pay a hundred and forty thousand dollars. As you see, twenty twenty was much more expensive. Um, that, that's largely because of the Hunter case as well as the Van Morsel lawsuit. Van Morsel is a, is a fatality case on Pacific Highway. Um, we believe, these are anomalies. We haven't had a lot of these large payout cases and so. Uh. We're budgeting three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars for both twenty one and twenty two to cover basically all claims that aren't covered by our insurance policy. Um, it probably will go down from there. I expect it will go down from there even below two fifty five at some point. Uh, the reason three thirty, that we have a very specific number there is that we have um. Claims that we've already received on board and we've earmarked um, money to either pay attorney's fees to defend those click claims or potential uh. Or potentially settle them. So that's where that number comes from. The auto property line here, um, the first number, five forty two, is. Not really accurate. So I, it's in here because that was in our budget and it's been, it's in the books, but. That's money that was, a large part of that money was um, put in that line item mistakenly and it's actually stuff that we use later on for general liability. So the one thirty number is, is our actual cost for, for auto um, stuff. We'll continue to need money in the auto and property line um, to. A, cover the cost of repairing uh, vehicles upfront because uh, we are insured, the police vehicles are insured now, but. It's on a reimbursable basis, so we'll still have to repair the vehicles upfront. And then get our money back from the insurance company later and we'll also need money to pay the deductibles on those. Um, there is, we do expect to see some premium increase as well in twenty twenty one. The risk premiums you can see is uh. There's, there's a shift there in twenty twenty and that's because we went to the insurance pool. So five hundred and five thousand dollars is how much we. Paid for our, basically it's an umbrella policy. It's our, our excess coverage. Um, it had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deductible insurance policy. We now have a zero deductible policy under, within eight hundred and forty six thousand dollar deductible. The, we just learned that um, twenty one, our premium will be nine hundred and seven thousand dollars. Our training budget has been pretty consistent. We did have to increase it in twenty one, uh, just because. Trainings and travel have become more expensive. Um, that forty one dollar number is because of twenty twenty being the worst year ever. Um, we haven't been able to travel or train really. So uh, we are doing, thankfully, we have a training coming up, uh, that's. Going to be online, that will get us, the, the attorneys, the continuing education credits that we need to stay licensed. Uh, but. That's, that's why that number's so low. Um, we just haven't had a chance to, to go to the normal trainings that we do. Um, office supplies have stayed pretty static over the years. Um. The last category is salary and benefits and those are largely uh, step increases over time and then the raise that the mayor has proposed for all employees. So this is the same information, just with some graphs so that people can see a little bit. See graphically. Um. As you can see, a large chunk of the law budget is actually the risk fund. So law salaries have. Been, now let's get to twenty one here. There we go. So our. So our proposed budget for salaries is $1.6 million for salary and benefits for the twelve point five employees. We have an operations budget of $23,000. That includes mail, office supplies. Like we usually get one chair a year to replace one of the chairs that are falling apart in our department, those sorts of things. Occasionally we'll need interpreting services or some other specialty service that might come out of that budget. The $330,000 number are those consulting attorney's fees that we need for either contract defense, land use issues, things like that. And then the proposed budget is for, for risk is one point four seven five. You can see 2022, it's largely the same. So some highlights from the department. We have been, I mean, a lot of department kind of has their fingers in everything. We have advised on the city center redevelopment, IRG and IRG's land use petitions on the former warehouse or property continue to be a lot of work for us. We will no doubt continue to work on, on, on IRG issues for the years to come. We did the utility tax defense when we, we imposed a utility tax on the water and sewer districts in the city. That had to be defended. We currently have a very large outstanding claim related to the phase five construction of State Route ninety nine. And we expect that that will probably come to litigation this year. We're in the very end phases of denying their claim. We review a lot of documents. All the ordinances and resolutions are reviewed by the city, by the city attorneys. You can see the numbers there. We also have a hand in all of the labor contracts. The judge talked about Just Where, that, that we, that will be a part, we will be a part of the, the, I guess, maybe not selection, but we'll have input on which program the court selects and also the development. Right now, the, the city prosecutors actually use the program that was chosen by the court to do their day to day job. So we have a huge stake in which software is chosen to replace it. The prosecutors, this year prosecuted about 3,000 cases. We on average have, over the years, ranged between three and 4,000 criminal cases per year. One thing we're very proud of is the police forfe, asset forfeiture cases that, that we've been working on with the police department. We're one of the few cities that have seized houses. Eric Rhodes in our department, one of the assistant city attorneys in the civil side, has been very successful in, in defending the seizures of these homes. We successfully basically forced the sale of two homes, two houses that netted the city $126,000. That was by agreement, they gave us that money for those two houses. We've also recently had, took a case all the way to court where they forfeited and we now own the house. And we expect to get over $100,000 in profit from that sale after the lien holders on the property are paid off. In addition to the houses, the police have seized over $170,000 in cash and a vehicle. And all of those have been defended by our office. As far as other revenues, Tanya Proctor, who is the person that goes after people that owe us money, has managed to recover $176,000 for damaged property in 2019. We are also very happy to have transitioned to the insurance pool and we continue to work with them to more fully integrate their services with, with the city. They offer a lot and sometimes it's just a matter of knowing how to use their many services. Anticipate key projects. The city attorney's office is kind of a machine. We just keep churning. And so we'll be, keep doing what we do, which is advise staff and elected officials, defendant cities' legal interests, continue to prosecute those misdemeanors that are filed in the city of federal way. We have five labor contracts coming up that need to be negotiated. HR and law are involved on all of those. Like I said, we'll be working on Just Where with the court and we'll continue to collect and damage property monies out to the city. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, counsel, Councilor Coach Mar.
Thank you very much and thank you, Ryan. It's a good presentation. I have just a couple of quick questions. I can see why you've gone to WCIA. Because, well, for example, 2019, you spent almost a half a million on a contract attorney. And I can guess why that is. You know, so I, I would really like to see reports on a quarterly basis if I don't see why we couldn't do that on, on our claims. I'd like to see that. And I think Tanya is doing a good job on going after the claims that are owed, the money that's owed. That's, that's a difficult process. I appreciate that, but I'm wondering, you know, the court just, Judge Larson just said that they have 15 million in unpaid fines. And I'm wondering, you know, Tanya is doing a good job. I'm wondering, you know, what's the difference? Why aren't we going after those unpaid fines through the court system for the court?
Well, those fines are all in collections for the most part with the court. So someone is going after them. We've hired someone to do that on a percentage basis. It's very different to go after, most of the time we're going after an insurance company, to be honest, for, for the, for this money. Getting money from defendants and people or infractioners in, in criminal courts, a whole different thing. So a lot of those people are judgment proof and will probably never see that money. But we have much more success with people that are insured. And as far as your first point is the quarterly reports, I talked to Tanya about that and she's, she says it's not a problem.
Yeah, thank you. She's probably either keeping an Excel spreadsheet or she's keeping a database, one, one of the two.
Yes.
Yeah, and I really appreciate seeing that. Thank you.
Well, we'll reach out to you and make sure that whatever we produce is what you want.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any other questions? Councilor Berusso.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ryan, for the presentation and your work that you do. You had in there negotiating five labor contracts. Is that the, are those contracts up in the, in this budget cycle or are these?
What is? Yeah, I, I believe they're all coming up in twenty one. I think all of our labor unions are coming up in twenty one. So we did a lot of one, we did a couple of one years because we didn't really know where, where the, where the budget was going. So they're going to kind of all come ahead at, at once, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council President Honda.
Thank you. When you're working with the forfeitures and the houses that you're selling and generating some income for the city, are these from drug cases?
I, I'm sorry, that I, I should have made that more clear. Yes, these are houses that were seized as drug asset forfeitures. So as far as I know, they're all marijuana grows. So these are homes that were purchased by, I don't know by who. I don't want to speculate, but when, when the police went into them, they were filled from the, the, every single floor and a lot of times modified just to be basically where marijuana factories.
So we actually Oh, I, Council President Honda, I was just going to say there's been a tremendous success with regard to cleaning up Twin Lakes and what was more than four dozen of these have been stopped and, and eradicated by the police department through ongoing efforts past couple of years.
So if there's been four dozen homes in which marijuana was being grown and we've only sold three, do the others go back to the property owner?
So it's a good question. I, I, first I want to make it clear just how much work it is to, unlike seizing a car where we basically just take the car and we have it in our possession, therefore it's ours unless you can prove otherwise. Houses, you have to go to court and there's, there's, we have to litigate each one of these. So the other issue is that sometimes, for whatever reason, people buy these houses and they, they either own them outright or there's, there's money, they're not upside down on them. However, a lot of them, there's mortgages on them, there's just no money in them. So because it's so painful to, to, not painful, but it takes a lot of work to seize these homes and make it stick. We only go after those that we think there's some money in. So that's been the main criteria, I think, that the police department and Eric have been using is that there's a profit to be made. If there's no money, we don't do after it.
Okay.
I would say it's, it's been over that time, maybe when the chief gives his presentation. At one point we had quite a number, like I said, approaching. You know, Chief, how many were there?
One year we did about 25 homes, another year about 30 homes. So we'll tell you that the city's strategic approach to dealing with this has been effective. This is an organized crime. And as city attorney was talking, sometimes you got to show a nexus that the financial institution or the owner of the home knew there was illegal activity. And sometimes we can't, through our investigation, can't draw those lines, connect the lines. So we have to do a tremendous amount of surveillance, bank records and everything else to tie that. But bottom line is the organized, the criminals know not to come to federal way because we've taken this step. Not every jurisdiction does this, but we needed to do this. But the word is out because there's only handful left now in the city.
Good, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, Brian, excuse me, Ryan, were you in the middle of, of anything else?
Were you? No, no.
Okay. I just want to make sure you guys were aware of that huge success story because it's been, you know, we had folks coming in from, you know, and obviously, you know, Eric came in and along with Ryan and, and the lead detective on these. And when I expressed I want to be as, you know, tough as possible and take as many of these houses as we could. Once they went through all the pending cases, I realized that's exactly what they were doing. So anyway, just want to let you know that. A lot of great work. Okay, counsel, any other questions? Great job, Brian. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, now we've got our police department, Chief Wong. And then after Chief, then we're going to take a break.
All right, good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Honda and members of the council. It's my pleasure to present to you the police department's 2021, 22 proposed biannual budget. It's been a historic year for us, certainly very difficult and challenging year for the police department navigating the COVID nineteen and the civil unrest. I want to share with you that I'm extremely grateful of our staff for their hard work, carrying out a very important and the necessary work day in and day out to serve and protect our community members. I also want to thank the mayor and council for your support as well as the support we receive from our residents and business community. This is what sustains the men and women in the police department to serve during these trying times. The law enforcement profession has gotten more complicated and challenging more than ever before. My presentation this evening will take about 15 minutes and afterwards I will answer any questions that you might have. I will spend a little more time on slide two and three. After that, I think things will move along much quicker. This is a macro view of our department's organizational structure. The department is divided into two major divisions, a field operations and support services division, both headed up by deputy chiefs, Kyle Sumter and Steve Neal, who report directly to the chief of police. In addition, the professional standards section headed by Commander Kirk Schwan also reports directly to me for media issues and standards investigations. This evening, both Commander Kirk Schwan and Deputy Chief Steve Neal has joined us in this meeting. They both do the heavy lifting in terms of preparing the budget, but they're both assigned to the administrative side. So they know the details of our budget, but they do the heavy lifting and I thank them for joining us tonight as well. One other person who reports to the chief of police is our office manager, Ms. Lynette Allen, who provides tremendous support to me and to the deputy chiefs and running our office down here in administration. As you can see in the organizational chart, vast majority of our staff are assigned to the uniform division and field operations, a total of 115 employees. This is where a majority of our work is, work demand, and most of our people wear a uniform when they come to work each day. Some of the units that are assigned to field operations include patrol services, traffic unit, special operations unit, contracted police services and specialty teams. In support services division include criminal investigation section, where we have persons and property crime units, special investigations unit, gang unit, administration and civilian operations. The police department is authorized 137 police officers. We currently have six vacancies at this time and we are doing several backgrounds of lateral and entry level applicants. I want to bring relevance to what 137 means today to what it was back 13 years ago. When Prop one passed, our city was authorized 136 officers. That was 13 years ago. And at the Great Recession, our department, the police department budget was slashed to 122 sworn positions. And over time, we've added, you know, bodies, officer positions within the city to where we are today, bringing us to 137 officers. When you look at, so what I would tell you is that 137 is 1.39 officers per thousand residents. So 13 years ago, our ratio for officers was 1.61. So the prop was, prop was done in order to bring our staffing level to little, it was to be more than the state average. So our ratio of 1.39 office, and, and I'll talk to that, about that here a little bit more. Civilian staff, we have 33 sworn positions. Over the years, we've actually slashed our civilian side, especially particularly during the Great Recession. So our civilian number staffing is, when you compare it to agencies of our size, we are, we are operating very, very thin at the officer level and also at the civilian positions. And we have one record specialist position as of today. Sometimes people look at police departments or fire department and they'll say, you know, the PD budget is larger than other departments and so forth. One of the things about what people sometimes forget about first responders, whether it's police or fire, we're a 24, seven, 365 day operation. If, if we were nine to five, like most city departments, you just work nine to five with weekends off and holidays off, we could probably run the police department with about 50 employees. But busiest time for us is late afternoon, early evening. When we have a holiday, we've got to work it, we work weekends, seven days a week. No matter what's going on, we have to have people working and we have to be able to meet the demand. When citizen calls 911 for help, we don't have an option to say, you know, we'll get back with you sometime this week. I mean, we need to respond. When somebody's having a heart attack, the fire department needs to respond. They can't say we'll get to you sometime next day or two. So a little different when it comes to police work. So how we do this is we have three shifts, day shift, swing shift and night shift. Each shift has two squads, AB signed it, a day shift, C and D, and then E and F for night squads. We have six squads. So that's our baseline for So that's our baseline for police services. We have seventy-five thousand calls for service. That's just over two hundred, uh, calls for service per day. And when you compare, um, our city to other cities, we, we, we are a busy city. And I can say that about all of South King County, um, all our jurisdictions down here. We, we are a busy police department. There's a tremendous, um, workload that's placed on us. We do a hundred and seventy employees. And I wanted to let you know that, um, we did reduce, uh, three F T's within the police department. As we were working through the budget, uh, with the, uh, finance director and, uh, we talked about it. We did make a recommendation to, uh, reduce three F T's within the police department, mainly because our traffic safety fund, uh, revenues are significantly down. And that in part funds the police department. So I, we did make the recommendation to, um, drop three F T's within the police department. Now I want to show you again, two divisions, uh, we have two divisions within the police department run by, overseen by deputy chief. We have six sections within the police department and that's usually-
Chief, can I just interrupt you for a second? I want to make sure. So instead of adding six officers, we're only going to add three. Uh, we're not cutting three, we're, I just want to make sure it's very clear that we're adding three to the one thirty-four.
Correct. Uh, we did, the mayor and council accepted the cops grant that, that added six officers. But later on, as we began working the budget, it was very evident based on revenue that, uh, we need to cut some funds from the police department. So it is a net gain of three officers, bringing us to one thirty-seven. That's one more officer than we have ever had. And the highest number that we've had was back in two thousand and eight, so two thousand seven, two thousand and eight. And then, uh, six sections, it's run by commanders and civilian operations manager. So they have section responsibilities. And then we have total of seventeen work units. That's where supervisors, whether they're assigned to patrol or civilian side. So that's hard structure and chain of command works, uh, within the, within the police organization. I guess that the main message I wanted to convey to you, because sometimes people say, well, you have a lot of, uh, employees within the police department. It, we are a twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five day operation. And I can tell you that I've been with this organization for a long time and doing this job for a while. I can tell you that every day we're, we're harken are just to get through the calls of service and all the other demands that comes, uh, into the police department. So we're, we're pretty lean, uh, lean operation. Okay, so now key accomplishments for, uh, past almost two years now, two thousand nineteen and twenty. Uh, two thousand nineteen was a very good year for us. Uh, we had an overall, uh, crime reduction of, uh, eight percent. And through eight months of two thousand and twenty, when you compare it to the first eight months of two thousand and nineteen, we do have a reduction of four percent. But I want to add in there that, uh, the reason the crime was down was during the emergency stay home order. We saw a significant reduction in, in calls for service, whether it's traffic related accidents, basically no one was out. And there's three things that, um, elements that need to be present for crimes to occur, which is you gotta have a victim, you gotta have a perpetrator and you gotta have an opportunity. When everyone was staying home, uh, we saw a, a, a significant reduction in crime. Uh, people weren't doing any e-commerce, you know, getting together, uh, having things stolen. It was, everybody was home, so homes weren't being broken into. It was slow, but I would tell you, August was a, activity did pick up significantly. Um, I don't think that a level of fear with COVID exists today than it did then. Cause we have, we're back to normal calls for service. And September has also been a very busy month for us. I don't know where it's gonna land, but last, uh, couple of months has been, uh, pretty busy for us, uh, within, within the police department. And I can tell you that, uh, we're paying a very close attention to crime, uh, because in King County homicide rate with guns is up forty-four, uh, percent and the rate of people getting shot is up twenty-one percent, uh, just for the first six months of two thousand and twenty. And, uh, uh, just anecdotally, it's been really busy even for July, August, uh, even up to this point in King County. So we're definitely seeing a lot more, uh, violent crime in the region. So we need, we're closely paying attention to that and, and trying to have a positive impact in our, uh, community. The next item, uh, we maintained our, uh, national accreditation rating with, uh, CLIA. Uh, we're one of, um, eight, uh, nationally accredited agencies within the state of Washington. I would tell you, this is our, uh, engine, this is our, um, vehicle, uh, to, for continual improvement. And accreditation is not something that's easily attained. This is something as a policy group that you should be very proud of, uh, that your police department is nationally credited. Accreditation is one of the police reforms that's being talked about at the local, uh, state level and also at the national level. And I want you to know that your police department is already, uh, accredited at the highest level possible in the law enforcement, uh, profession. And then, uh, we provided all state and CLIA mandated training, including, uh, fair and partial policing training, crisis intervention training, use of force, de-escalation training, reality-based training. Part of the, uh, police reform, uh, it was initiative I nine forty, uh, which, uh, was compromised to House Bill ten sixty-four, which is also now known today as L T S A, law enforcement training, community safety act. I want you to know in terms of all the reforms that's required, mandatory training for mental health, um, responding to crisis, we've, we have adapted and we're providing all those training. In addition to, we have established a, uh, independent investigation team for officer involved shooting, meeting all the WAC, uh, Washington administrative code pertaining to officer involved shootings. And we are being credited at the state level of having an outstanding team, uh, to be modeled after. So when WASPIC talks to other, uh, regions, uh, even the academy, they do refer other jurisdictions to say, you go, you need to go talk to Valley investigative, uh, team. So, uh, we're, we're proud that we were able to meet all the requirements pertaining to state and CLIA training. WAC requires that twenty-four hours of training is provided to, you know, police officers, it's mandated. We provide much more training that, it's a significant investment for our city. We've been doing it for a long time. And we want to make sure we continue that for our people. Uh, patrol maintain continuity and response time. Overall, our response time's been good for nineteen and twenty. We saw, uh, no changes. And we have a culture of trying to solve problems at every officer level, every level in the organization. I think patrol has done a really good job overall, meeting the demands of, uh, what's placed on us by our citizens and problem solving. One of the things that we do is we have an all supervisory meeting where we have our crime analyst coordinator, uh, Michelle Roy, who comes and gives us reports on crime. And then we talk about trends and then we talk about, uh, what are the plans? What is the operations plan? What do we want to focus on as an organization for the next month? So there's continual, uh, crime data sharing, um, that occurs within the organization. We think that's a, a good accomplishment for us, uh, kind of a mini ComStat approach. Very, uh, data-driven in terms of what, what's the numbers. Um, one of the significant successes, uh, that the mayor and the council, um, implemented was, um, leaving score. That's bringing us an annual, uh, savings of, uh, two point one million dollars. And in fact, in two thousand and twenty, uh, in part because of COVID, uh, we had even additional savings that we allocated, shifted another three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to, um, to the general budget, um, for, um, you know, two thousand twenty, for two thousand and twenty. So I think the savings will continue, um, but I'm, I'm also very pleased that the jail budget is not, um, being slashed at all because at some point COVID could be over. We want to make sure that, uh, we have adequate funding in our, uh, jail services and housing if, if needed. Um, we maintained our registered sex offender verification. We have about a hundred and fifty, uh, registered sex offenders who live within our city. And we do, through grant funding, we do, uh, physically check on, uh, each registered sex offender in our community. Level one, level two and level three. We've been doing that for a number of years. We want to continue that as well. And then we collaborate, uh, with regional and local teams when it comes to drugs, gangs and gun violence. No one jurisdiction can do it alone. We do need to partner with our local and, uh, county and, uh, state, federal jurisdictions. Um, and this is one of our regional auto theft. Um, we are the lead agency with the South, South, uh, Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force, um, in nineteen and twenty. Um, we do tremendous amount of outreach. Um, our CAPS team obviously does a lot of outreach, but we also, in our culture, it's part of our DNA. Every opportunity, um, is, uh, opportunity to earn the public's trust. So we try to do a lot of outreach, um, that's part of our culture. Just a few things that we do here, uh, we implemented the positive tickets program where we partner with local businesses. Even with COVID, um, through social distancing practices, we did a drive-through ice cream social, uh, this summer, which was tremendously, uh, popular and well-received. A coffee with a cop, uh, program, citizens academy, we do it both for teenagers and for adults in the department, but we, we, we try to be very involved and very active within the community. Um, we meant, we talked, uh, talked about marijuana grows in our neighborhoods. I shared with you, um, it's organized crime. It did generate quite a few complaints at its peak. Um, people didn't want drug houses in their neighborhood. Sometimes there might be, uh, when criminals find out it's a marijuana grow, you have to constantly worry about a home invasion robbery type, which we've had some of those. So, um, getting those type of homes out of the neighborhood, it makes just everybody, uh, much safer. And there's so much money to be made. Uh, one marijuana home can net about a million a year. So there's a reason why they do it and, uh, but we certainly have turned, um, the corner and have made a positive impact. And like I said, the criminals, organized criminals know that, don't go to federal way because we will try to, uh, seize your home if, if, if we can. So that's helped us out. Uh, expansion of safe city camera program to enhance public safety. Uh, we're at twenty hu- two hundred and forty cameras and growing. Uh, this has been a, a long, long-term project and, uh, past, uh, four or five years, we've really accelerated with state, uh, state grant funding. So we have solved, uh, high-profile crimes and we saw many crimes and, and, and I guess what it's used most often for are traffic accidents, uh, intersection accidents, uh, both parties say they have the green light. And many, many times our officers go to that and say, and they can definitively say who ran the red light. So that's probably what it's used the most, but we also solve high-profile crimes with it. We need to continue to grow that. That program right there is very unique to federal way. Not every jurisdiction around us, surrounding us have, uh, have that type, that, this many cameras or license plate reading cameras. We have some of that too. So that's good technology for us. It helps us. Uh, we also have au- uh, automated license plate, uh, reader vehicles. We have total of four equipped vehicles. And that, uh, certainly impacts, uh, with the volume of traffic in our community, there's just hard to, you know, pick out vehicles. But these vehicles, you can drive through an apartment complex, parking lot, and it'll, uh, recover any wanted or stolen vehicles. We, we turn a lot of stolen vehicles and they come from all over the region, uh, into different cities. Okay, so these are our new program requests for the police department. Uh, these are funded and approved. Um, as, as you know, um, you know, cops hiring program grant, uh, we will receive two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. That will augment, uh, some of the costs for our police officers. Uh, taser, uh, replacement, uh, thirty thousand dollars. And I want to tell you, this is the only item that is new money that we're asking for as a police department. Rest of it will be through replacement reserve funds or excess reserve. So we're not asking for any new money. But this is one of the less lethal weapons that we provide to our officers and we, and we have a five-year rotation, uh, with the taser. So we, we were asking for new money and the mayor did, uh, give the blessing on that. Uh, patrol bicycles, we need to replace eight vehicles. A lot of the bicycles we have are ten years and older now. And, uh, we want to plan ahead for eleven and twelve, twenty-one and twelve with a downtown developing, a pack highway. We need to be strategic and place officers with bicycles, our special operations units. So we want to get some new bikes for that. And the twenty thousand dollars is from, uh, replacement reserve that we've kind of saved up over the years for these bicycles. So basically, uh, we're asking, even though we have the money in place, we're asking for council approval to, uh, proceed forward and, and replacing some of the bicycles. Uh, for two thousand and twenty-two police vehicle replacement, in two thousand twenty-one, um, we have total of, uh, fourteen vehicles that are regularly scheduled for replacement. And our vehicles, patrol vehicles are on a seven-year, uh, vehicle rotation. And in two thousand and twenty-two, there are a total of seventeen vehicles, uh, thirteen patrol cars and four motorcycles. Uh, they need to be replaced. Again, this money's in our replacement reserve fund that we've been collecting for these vehicles and they're on a seven-year replacement schedule. And we're asking for council approval. A bomb disposal, disposal unit vehicle refurbished, uh, the vehicle itself is fine, but the, the, the container, it's leaking water. It's got mold, the drawers are all broken, um, so, and the vehicle is, uh, sixteen years old. So, but even then, uh, because it's not driven that many miles, the, the engine itself, everything is fine. Uh, this is one way we could refurbish it and have a, uh, uh, operational vehicle, yet not have to replace the vehicle altogether. Evac trailer replacement, um, it's just simply old and needs to be replaced. It's leaking water. And this is where we have all our cones that are placed in this trailer. And then traffic trailer replacement, we're, uh, seeking to, um, have a covered, a trailer that we can haul up to four motorcycles. If necessary, if it needs to be repaired, that needs to be taken, uh, to the shop or maybe going to training. So, um, we'd like to, uh, replace the trailer on, for the motorcycle, motorcycles. And then utility vehicle pickup truck. Right now we have a Tahoe vehicle. We use the, it's really old. We used it as a secondary vehicle and our volunteers use that to take out the speed trailer, tow the evac trailer or the traffic trailer and so forth. But that vehicle just needs to go. It's costing us more in maintenance costs. But again, we're asking to use the excess reserve to buy a new pickup truck to, to, uh, tow all these vehicles and trailers. Again, every one of these items are money that's in our, uh, replacement reserve and excess reserve for vehicle. We're just seeking council approval to, um, to spend it in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And then, uh, these are the, uh, things we've asked, but it's unfunded. Um, and we'll look for other funding opportunities moving forward and we can certainly come to council at that time. But our cellular phone upgrade, we still, many of our officers still have the flip phones that they use. Uh, but we're seek, we were seeking to eventually update it to a, a basic smartphone. So you can use it as a recording device or, um, you know, take pictures. Not everybody has a, a smartphone in our department at this point. And then benchmark analytics is something that's used in professional standard side. It's record keeping for, um, number of complaints, um, you know, all the data that we keep for officers that are injured, trap, record keeping for professional standards. We don't have ongoing money for this, uh, software. But again, um, you know, we can't get everything we need and we understand that. But I, I just wanted to share with you the couple of items that was not funded. And right now we have more and more officers that are choosing to live within our city. Uh, we've been doing more recruiting within our city. Um, so we're getting more federalway residents and they're actually choosing, they already live in the city. So one of the things in the contract, um, is that we provide a vehicle if you live within the city limits or proposed annexation area. But, uh, so we were, um, asking for additional eight vehicles, uh, two hundred and eighty thousand a year, four vehicles a year. But again, uh, due to funding, uh, we will look for other ways to use secondary vehicles and so forth. But I wanted to share with you that over time, we're looking to expand our take-home car program and for officers who live within the city. These are unfunded. Okay, so for agency goals, um, I think everyone in our community wants to, um, uh, be safe and feel safe. So we will continue to do the things that we do, partnering with our stakeholders, all the things that I shared with you earlier to impact crime in a positive way. So we want to make sure that people feel safe in our community. That's important. Uh, successfully undergo our re-accreditation with CLIA or our best practice audit. So two thousand twenty-one, we're actually going to have an onsite, um, a re-accreditation where outside professionals are gonna come in. So we're gonna work towards making sure that we get accredited at the national level. Uh, again, meet all the CLIA mandatory training requirements. And any other new requirements for training next two years, we will implement it and we'll, uh, lead the way. Whether it's state mandated or other, uh, training, we will certainly continue to do that. And then we will partner, um, with other, um, you know, communities, um, particularly minority communities. And recently, um, um, we've been doing a lot more of that with the civil unrest. Um, I know, uh, we're participating in the mayor's, um, quarterly meeting with the African-American- quarterly meeting with the African-American black community. We had the chief's call advisory group. I've been in communication with Washington Coalition for police accountability. I've had some communication with the Black Collective Group, Community Accountability Coalition. So it's happening in terms of communicating. I would look at racial inequity and so forth as, as a journey. And we want to make sure that we're part of that journey of continuing to look for ways to improve and building trust within our community. We talked about distributing monthly crime analysis information. So we'll continue to do that in our operations. In the 21, 22, we want to focus spending, doing more problem-oriented policing on Highway 99, downtown, 21st and Southwest Campus to impact crime and safety. The, the reason these three areas are kind of listed is wherever there's a high volume of people or people come together, you're just going to have more opportunities for potential crime. And I already shared that with you, those three things that's needed. So those are the kind of our areas that we have more activity than other places. So we're going to try to have a higher presence of police presence and problem solving. And then again, regional collaboration to impact drugs, auto theft, gangs and gun violence. People don't seem to talk about traffic so much, but I've said it over the years, for average law-abiding citizen, you're far more likely to be injured in a traffic accident, whether it's a DUI or just random traffic accident than by any other means. That this doesn't tend to create so much fear per se because they're random, generally not criminal, but it is the biggest threat to our citizens. We respond to quite a few accidents just every day. Again, we're going to continue our community outreach with our CAPS unit, Registered Sex Offender Verification Program. For these, for successful planning. I would tell you that two deputy chiefs and myself, each one of us have thirty or more years of police experience. We're kind of at the tail end of our careers. So we want to make sure that when each one of us leaves this organization, that this place is stronger. And far as career development, we, for our command level, we send them to the FBI Command College. We have continual development mentorship that's going on. And we're really excited about some of the new people that are coming on, the new generation. They're really excited to come into this business and our responsibilities continue to develop them. So we maintain a healthy culture and organization that you can all be proud of. So that's the end of the presentation. I'm certainly ready to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Uh, here we go. Councilor Coach Mar.
Thank you. Hey, Andy, thank you for a wonderful presentation. Um, we don't have a dog anymore. Is that correct? Dex, the dog?
No, we, we have two generalist dogs. One dog handler, Lieutenant Buchanan was promoted. So we have vacancy for a canine. So eventually we will have a, a second canine. But when we need a canine dog, if they're not working, we have mutual agreement with surrounding South King County cities. We share our resources as far as canine.
All right. Thank you. Do we still have community-based offices? For example, I think there was one near 288th and Military.
Yes, we have, we have a few substations.
Okay. So we, so we still have those?
Oh yeah. Uh, one, a brand new one on Pat Highway. Near where the old lumberyard was, we've got one in Twin Lakes, right next to that little mart. We have the one right next to the, you know, right next to the parking garage, the Sun Transit parking garage. So, yeah.
Oh, great.
Apartment at 288 there.
Yeah, great. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing up about the parking garage. I'm worried about when light rail comes in, whether if we're at the end of the line for a while. I'm worried a little bit about what might be coming in on light rail and ending up in our community in 2024.
We'll be ready.
Thank you.
With your help.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to say thank you, Andy. I did have a grow house next to me and it took a while. Literally it was a nightmare for my family. And when the marijuana had grown to the point where it was ready to be harvested, the smell was in the community, in the neighborhood was overwhelming. And so my other neighbor on the other side of me was the one who was the spearhead on trying to do something about this. So we were very, very happy when they had a flashbang entrance to the home a, a number of years, several years ago. And, and so it's been so much better then, but it did bring people to our area. And so I'm, that we weren't sure who they were. I, so I'm wondering, what, how does this work when they have a grow house and they've literally destroyed the inside of the house? So, but how did they market the product? How does that end work?
A lot of the product is actually transported out of the state. So there's a tremendous demand throughout the country. The organized crime that we were dealing with from the East Coast. And they did several things to sever, like as to who owned the home. So a lot of times these people are tenders and they may not even know who owns the home itself. But they're, they're willing to be tenders for these homes because there's, you know, they get paid basically. But the people at the top of this organized crime are the ones that are making, you know, tremendous amount of money. But the money, the marijuana gets trafficked all over, a significant amount goes to the East Coast.
Wow. Thank you for explaining that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay. Councilor Berusso.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for what you do, your staff. We really appreciate the confidence and save. I have a few questions for you. So on the specialty teams that you have, how many members do you have per shift? For specialty teams, do they, do they come in or are there, you know what I mean? Is there a minimum on shift at a time?
Well, the specialty teams are generally small. So like, for example, let's say traffic unit. You're going to have officers coming in at six, some of them come in at 6:00 AM so that we cover the morning traffic rush and we have some accidents when the volumes are higher. Then it gets quiet and then afternoon about two, three o'clock, the accident number starts to go up again because people are now heading home. So we have officers that come later in the day, like nine, 10 o'clock to cover the evening rush. So that's, so that, so that's how it's spread. Gang officers typically work evening hours, so swing shift type of hours. Narcotics detective, they work days, nights, they just work different hours. But so depending on SROs, another specialty, they work school hours. So it, it varies. But when we have a large operation and then all the specialty teams come together and like, let's say they take down a marijuana home or a drug home, then we pull our resources together. But you got to have these specialty teams because if it's just general patrol officer, that they're never, you, they're the ones that are just responding to 911 calls. But we got to have some people on the side that are specialized, training detectives who can take care of those, those type of things.
Exactly. Thank you, Chief. So my other question is for folks. Do you have a number of total calls for 2019 and where you're at for 2020? Do you know it at all?
Yeah, it, it's been trending down last couple of years. And I threw the number of 75,000 because that's kind of where I believe we're probably close to that this year. We've been high as 83,000 calls a few years ago and last couple of years, it's been kind of trending down. So I didn't want to round up too high, but I, I put it at 75,000 or so. So we'll, we'll be in the ballpark of probably 72 to 76,000, somewhere around there.
Thank you, Chief, because I wanted the folks to realize that how many of those calls in one year? I mean, that's a lot of calls when you look at a lot of things. You have the tasers for the, I know they're in there, but are you just $30,000 for taser? Are you just replacing half at a time for both years, 2021, 2022?
No, not even half. Five-year rotation. So 30,000, I would just say like one-fifth. So every, you know, 20% is replaced every year. That's what we're asking because that's about the number and the cost. So we were looking to replace about 20% a year.
Okay. All right. Last question, Chief. So you talked about succession planning. So who's eligible for the leadership training, something like that? Do you, do you folks pick? They apply or how's that work? Does it go by seniority?
When we do performance evaluations, people have certain career path that they want to take. Some, some officers want to become detectives. Some officers want to get into canine. So the supervisor who's coaching and mentoring will try to guide and direct that officer to the career path they want to go to. But when they start getting become lieutenants and commanders, again, who, who's our future leaders? So generally speaking, we put priority for commanders to go to the FBI Command College. We want to make sure that at command level that they have middle management certification with the Criminal Justice Training Commission. Myself, the deputy chiefs and most commanders now, we have executive level certification. It's required by WAC. So when you become certain level, you have to obtain certain certifications. So we develop people coming up, lieutenants to become commanders, officers to become supervisors and so forth. So, and then we have a competitive testing process for those positions. And people compete in assessment and we have a ranking. At the end of the day, the chief has the final say in who gets promoted. So I hope that gives you some idea, but it's very competitive. We have really lots of bright people within our organization that can.
Yes, Chief. Thank you. Because, yeah, because I look at, you know, when you, when you look at that, you want to, you kind of try to round out who you're, I was kind of wondering if you had a criteria and what you were using. You know, to get a great diverse group into that. So thank you very much, Chief. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Councilor Seth Dawson.
Again, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. And I know you do a lot. Several questions. One is, what's your average response time with the number of officers that you currently have?
For emergency calls, not five minutes. We're going to get there within five minutes or so. That's our average. For all calls, our average response time is like 20 minutes. So from a person that, minute that they call 911 to an officer contacting them for emergency calls within five minutes. Some calls, we're going to get there within two minutes, three minutes, maybe sometimes longer. But we do it, the reason how we manage response time, we're not like the fire department where, where you have firehouses at certain locations. So you minimize response time, driving time. We are a sector, the sector policing. So our city is divided into four sectors and officers are assigned to a sector all day long. So they're supposed to stay in their sector. They go to the substation if they need to go in. But bottom line is we try to keep the officers within their sector so that when we have a priority call, everybody's not coming from south into the city to the north and from the station to wherever. So we try to strategically place officers to minimize or we, you know, decrease response time.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for explaining that you're instead of laying people off or whatever, you are not hiring to police officers, not to for the, yeah, to make the numbers work. So I appreciated that extra explanation from the mayor. My other question is, you have Citizens Academy for youth. How do you recruit those youths?
You know, through school resource, we put it out on our social media. I think we typically get about maybe, you know, eight to dozen kids and or crime analyst profession specialist. Lindsay Terro ranges schedules for, you know, like a one-week youth academy during the summer months. And then it's very similar, but it's lots of hands-on. So we get to meet, you know, young people in our community. Some of them have interest of becoming, you know, a police officer or a parent will hear about it and encourage their kid to participate. So typically that's what we do. And then we also partner with the fire department too. So not only do they get exposed to the police profession, but they also get to go to the fire department and do fun stuff over there for a day or so.
Okay. Thank you. I will ask you the same question I asked the judge about the LEED program and then the youth rights ordinance. And he's, yeah, he kind of alluded to your department, which does make sense. Is there anything you can tell me about it if we're doing it, planning on doing it, or if we're even considering any of those programs?
Yes, the LEEDs program is not available in federal way. I would love to have, have it be more expanded. And I'm going to tell you, one of the things when we talk about how to make our community safer, we need to deal with people that are addicted to drugs that are on the street. Many of these people are homeless. We encounter these people. There is no capacity. We really need at, at the state level, because when an officer comes in contact with someone who's running around naked, threatening people with a knife, they got mental health issue, they have drug issue. Quite often we're taking them to the hospital and you know what? Next day they're back out again on the street. We're dealing with them over and over. We need to create capacity. I know there's this program, that program, but I can tell you from talking to officers and myself, well, one of the things that we need is we've got to have higher capacity for dealing with people with drug addiction. And we need to get them off the streets because there is a public safety issue and for that individual. So definitely, you know, that's one of the things we need to, but LEEDs is not available for us here in federal way, not at this point. They're looking to expand, but it's just not here.
Okay. So I do appreciate what you just said, and I think that's been a big concern within communities. And we do here, we get emails all the time about homelessness and the issues. And so what you said makes a lot of sense, especially having experts. But is that something that you would incorporate at some point? Experts, mental health experts, social workers or housing specialists who can either go with you, go with, you know, creating a, a wraparound type of service within the department because that's needed and it's crucial. And I know your personnel can't do it alone. So what that would look like and how we can support it, because I think that's important for us to consider moving forward at least.
I, I think in terms of co-responder for mental health, those type of calls, I think it's important that we partner with our regional, you know, law enforcement agencies and King County resource. If you have mental health, we do have a crisis mobile team that can respond from King County and assist us. So it's not like there isn't any resource, but maybe there's an opportunity that with grant funding, we can do something on the south side. What I want to convey to you is that having a co-responder or a social worker respond can't replace police officers. I know it sounds good, but the reality is mental health professionals or social workers are not going to go into a DB call. They're not going to respond to these calls until it's rendered safe. So I would tell you that based on call load, we, that's an additional budget. It's going to cost additional money to the city. But from my perspective, what's really needed is we need to create capacity regionally at state level to be able to take someone who's suffering a drug addiction and mental health. That's the biggest challenge that we see on the streets every day. I think the, what you're talking about is helpful, but again, they can't replace police officers because when you get right down to it, fire department isn't going to come into a shooting until we say it's safe. Mental, social workers aren't going to come in until we stabilize things. So so I hope that helps you, but sure, we should be open to other opportunities, but it really comes down to funding. But those are two things that I really think it's needed at the state level. But we just don't feel like we're getting, there's some improvements, but we're not at the level that we need to.
And I appreciate, I do appreciate that. And I think, Mayor, if, since Chief talks about state level, maybe this is something we could put on our legislative agenda to consider funding, additional funding for this, because a lot of people are concerned about homelessness. They're concerned about mental health. And I think this might be the best way to address it. So thank you so much for your time and thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Council President Honda.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Chief, for being here. How many officers do we have waiting to go to the academy at this point?
Oh, I got to do this from memory, probably seven or eight, maybe up to nine.
So of the one thirty-one, is it?
No, we have.
We have nine that we're waiting to go.
Yeah, I, I think between seven and nine, something like that.
Do we have any in the academy now or they, they are open again, right?
Yeah, they're open again. They're not running, I don't think, at full capacity, but I think we have two or three in the academy now.
Okay. Is this something we need to ask our state legislators to continue working on to get more academy spaces open?
I think we're okay now. I spoke to the director up there, Rohr. Most, there's been a tremendous drop-off in number of new recruits coming. What's happening in Seattle, they're guaranteed certain number of academy slots. What's now happening in King County. So it's. So it's allotted more academy, uh, slots for other jurisdictions. We're also, uh, we've hired four Seattle officers now and we have two more that's looking to come. So all of a sudden, our staffing, uh, is looking much better in terms of the people that we need to hire. What you also need to realize is, uh, Mayor and Council recently authorized a six additional positions, right? So basically, we have six positions, but we added, uh, three more positions net, net gain. So we're, we're looking much better, but we do have people scheduled to go to the academy. But, uh, it was a bigger problem then, but it it's not as much of a problem now. There's a lot less weight. We're not, we're not waiting six months to send people now. They could probably go in a month or two.
Oh, that's good to know. Okay. Uh, I'd like to talk about cameras. Um, you and I've talked about this before, and this is something that our citizens are talking about, not just here in federal way, but throughout the state. Cameras, uh, when you and I talked about it, uh, I believe you said it would be, the first year would be at least a million dollars to get the cameras and have enough staff to download them and monitor them. Is that still that your assessment of that?
Yes, there'll be, uh, equipment costs, ongoing costs that you'll need, uh, I think we were, was it three or four FTEs, um, that will need to manage the program. Um, I think there'll be a labor cost, um, associated with implementing this as well. So there, there will certainly be a cost. I am not opposed to, uh, body cameras there, um, but I would tell you that if you're running an organization, it's, it's much better, uh, to have a solid foundation within your organization. You're hiring, uh, recruiting and hiring the right people, providing the training and education that having that solid foundation, because the camera itself is not going to change behavior if the officers don't receive adequate training. Because, you know, we're hiring, uh, you know, mothers, fathers, uh, brothers, sisters, we're hiring from just the general public. And, um, you know, so if, uh, an officer encounters fear and if they're not properly trained, whether you're wearing a camera or not, it's not going to make a difference. So for me, um, it's very important that we have adequate, uh, you know, training, uh, reality-based training, put them in those environments, in that stressful environment to see how they perform. So in the rural world, you're more likely to respond accordingly, like firefighting. I mean, you can talk about fire all you want in the classroom. At some point, you have to like literally have a mock fire and have a drill under stress. That's about the closest you can deal with having a real fire, right? So we try to do that. I think that's more important. Accreditation is important, but at the end of the day, uh, it's, I'm not opposed to it. I don't think that it it really comes down to cost, yes. So it'll be a near million dollars or so for the implementation for all officers to wear one.
And we, we clearly don't that have that in our budget. Is there, your office, your, uh, department is really good about getting grants. And I'm very happy about that because you get grants on a continual basis. And they go usually year to year, so they're renewed. Do you think there'll be grants to outfit departments with cameras in the, in the future?
This, this is one of the state reform items that it's being talked about, about by WASPIC, uh, Washington Association of Police Chief and Sheriff. So this is one of the things that maybe the state, um, because it is a problem for not just for us. It's a problem for a lot of jurisdictions, particularly smaller jurisdictions. And with COVID, uh, you know, nineteen and revenues being dropped off, it makes it even harder. So maybe there's an opportunity at the state level, whether there's extra funding for some source. But I think clearly it could be an item where, um, they can help municipalities maybe help implement that. Is one of the things maybe can be done at the state level to help us, whether it's grants or some sort of funding.
Okay. Uh, you also talked about the, uh, Safe City cameras, and I'd like to put a plug in again for cameras on the BPA trail. The BPA trail is rather large. There's a lot of activity that goes on down there. Uh, uh, we have lived near the BP, BPA trail since nineteen eighty. And when our children were younger, they were not allowed to go down on the trail in the eighties and nineties because I didn't think it was safe. At that point, I think that if we had cameras along the trail, folks would feel safer using the trail. And if there were illegal activities going on down there day or night, and I can tell you that illegal activities happen down there at night, we would know about it. And I would really encourage us to really think about cameras on the trail, not just to catch people doing something wrong, but to provide an additional level of safety. It's, it's secluded if something were to happen to someone and they're, they didn't have a phone or they got injured and there weren't other people around, perhaps a camera would would pick up the fact that they needed assistance. So I would, I would really like to see that eventually, um, before I get too many more gray hairs. And I'd also like to talk about homelessness. I'm seeing more and more homeless folks around the city in the last few weeks and I know we're going to have an ongoing issue this, this winter. We, we, we won't have the shelter system that we've had in the past. Our meal program has dropped off all due to COVID. And I agree with you that we need some support to win someone who is homeless or who is acting irrational and, um, dangerous to for themselves or dangerous for our citizens. That there has to be somewhere or someplace that we can take these people to get the help that they need and the services that they need. I don't have the answers, but I agree with you and I would really like, um, us as a city to encourage the state to have space where we can take people who need treatment, whether it's drug addiction or, um, mental health issues. Because allowing them to roam the streets of our city or Auburn or Kent is just, um, it's not humane. It's not kind and it's not helping anybody. And this is something that is, I see in the last few weeks is getting worse here in federal way. I think that we're having, for whatever reason, there are more people that appear to me needing some kind of assistance. And, um, I know that we don't have it, so uh, just, just a statement, I don't have answers. I don't think we as a city have answers, but as a region, we need to work together with our other South King County cities and come up with a solution. For a gift. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Chief, for your presentation. Um, I really appreciate it and I also want to say thank you to you and and your staff, uh, the work that, uh, you do every day to keep us, uh, in the city safe. Uh, really appreciate that. Um, in regard to the cell phone, um, I don't know if, uh, we can, uh, you know, talk with, uh, telephone, uh, provider, like, uh, maybe, uh, Verizon or AT&amp;T, um, so that we can get, um, perhaps a discount, um, phone or or even free phone. Uh, for my agency, for example, we got, um, iPhone seven or iPhone eight actually free from Verizon. And all we do is just pay the, the service fee every, every month. So you may want to look into that. Um, the second thing I want to, um, to share with you is that, you know, is the, for the person of color, uh, everywhere nowadays, not, 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 I'm not just saying in this city. Every few days or so, when we turn on the TV, we will see another police shooting of an unarmed, uh, person of color. And it's happened quite often. So there is a real fear in our community, uh, especially from the community of color. Uh, for us, you know, where the city is make up of almost fifty percent of people of color. I wonder, is there something that your department can do? Or perhaps we as a city can do to address that fear? Because I can tell you that it is real, it is real out there. Thank you.
Yeah. I think I mentioned some of the things we're already doing in terms of, um, uh, community engagement, outreach with the community, having discussions. But some of it, um, I would tell you, police reform, uh, is in the spotlight because law enforcement is the most visible, you know, branch of the US, of the government. So, um, we're in the spotlight, but if we, this is, if we really, really want to get to deep into really resolving the issues, I really feel that we need to work as policy group, state level, national level. We've got to deal with, um, you know, the poverty issue, um, you know, social economic issue, that part, and then also repairing our education. Because that's such a difficult task to resolve or issue to resolve. But if we can bring equity to that, where people have gainful employment, we're going to certainly have less, uh, law enforcement contacts. If we deal with the mental health aspect of it, I was talking about the drug aspect of it, there's going to be a lot less confrontation with the police. Quite often, we're dealing with people that are on drugs or have mental health issue. These social issues are coming to clash with the police because you are all asking us, hey, impact crime, keep our community safe. When somebody's in a crisis, who do they call? They call the police, so we respond. So we're responding as a police saying, these are social issues that needs to be addressed and will dramatically decrease. And I'll also say that these shootings have been going on for many years. Um, but it's being highlighted more by the media. Um, so there's clearly in social media, so there's perception that the numbers are significantly up. But this has been going on for a long time. That's why I say it's a journey. It's, we're not going to flip a switch and be done. I think that police can only do so much and we can be a partner, but we all have to do it at different institutions. But that's my thought, to deep, to get into deep and to repair those issues, those four things, addiction to drugs, mental health, poverty issue, where we have equity and education, because that is the equalizer for people getting good jobs, gainful employment. Then the divide that occurs in our country will be subsided. But nobody has the perfect formula, nobody has the answer, because if it, if we did, we would write a book on it and we'd be filthy rich. But I don't know if there's going to be any legislation that can just fix this thing overnight. It's, it's such a complex issue, but yet we are in the spotlight because, uh, we're in the frontline and we're dealing with these issues, these crises.
And, and I, I, I do, um, uh, support the, the statement earlier, uh, from, uh, Council President Honda regarding the, uh, the body cam. I think one of the, one of the way that I think we can enhance the trust, uh, from the public uh, is to have our officer to wear a body cam. And I think, uh, you know, I know it is expensive, uh, but, uh, I think this is one way we can do to, to help the public, uh, have more trust in our police department. Uh, and I agree with you, Chief, uh, body cam alone is not going to solve any problem. Uh, additional trend and well-trained, you know, officer, uh, you know, but I think the body cam will enhance that, will enhance the, the, uh, uh, the, the trust with, uh, between the community and and the officer.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I, I appreciate that and, um, you know, I, I, I do appreciate, uh, the, the questions, um, that, uh, I'm hearing from my colleagues. And, um, I'm just, I'm kind of processing everything still. So, um, Chief, you know, with your last comment, uh, and I, I do appreciate and I certainly trust your judgment and I know that you've got a wealth of experience, of course. Um, that i- i- it does take, um, you know, other means and and aspects to, excuse me, um, to address so that the, so that what we're seeing doesn't occur. So i- if, if everybody does their role, um, we should have a healthy, uh, and thriving community. Uh, that's what I'm kind of hearing. Is that, is that right, Chief?
Maybe, uh, I think I know where you're heading with this. I, I guess what I'm telling you is you can have really highly trained police officers. You can have body cams, you can have all the things that the police department needs to do in terms of, you know, reforming and all that. But at some point, it requires some level of cooperation, right? If, if you can do all the de-escalation, but if the person doesn't cooperate or they shoot at you, the police has to respond. So what I'm saying is to, before we get there, is there things that we can do as a society to reduce those number of contacts? And what I'm telling you is quite often when we're dealing with, uh, violent encounters with the police, we're dealing with people that are on drugs. They're not thinking, uh, you know, rational, um, or, uh, they got mental health issue or both. So the biggest threat that I see of violent police encounters, those type of things. Uh, there's other variables at play. You know, kids are exposed to so much more violence today than ever before. Their conflict resolution now is to pull out a gun and shoot at each other. We're seeing that every day in our region now, you know, young people engaging in gun violence. How do we fix that? And that's why I go back all the way to education, right? And, uh, gainful employment, because well, the people that are arresting generally aren't, uh, people with, you know, really gainful employment and things like that. People, people are like somebody, uh, Saffa, uh, Councilmember Saffa Dawson said, I think people that are hurting. So they're out committing crime and how do we fix that? There's no really easy answer.
Yeah, I, I think it's going to take a, 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 a whole community to come together to address those issues together. Um, and, you know, obviously, um, I agree that I think some situations, um, you know, our, our police officers have to be prepared for, uh, to address. And unfortunately, that could be, um, what it, what it, the, the situation calls for. Um, and so, uh, I certainly understand that and, and, uh, and I, and I appreciate what you're hearing, what, what I, what at least what I'm hearing. I appreciate what you're saying and that's, um, look, it, it's not that we're willing to, to evolve. It's, it's, it's more than that. We have to do other things to, uh, help with that. So, um, I guess, um, you know, I, I mean, I, I would, Chief, I, I mean, I, I would also favor, uh, so now you're hearing three council members, uh, I would favor, um, a study session, um, and some period of time to review. Um, I don't favor in, in having it in, in this budget, uh, but I would favor a study session on, uh, what does it look like to, to phase in a, a body cam system? Um, certainly it is expensive, um, you know, and whatnot, but I think it's a worthy, um, conversation on its own. Um, and, um, so I, I, I would favor that. Um, and secondly, um, you know, the question I had, um, in looking at the budget, um, is, uh, you obviously indicated training. Um, um, and I wanted you to kind of dig a little bit deeper. I mean, what does that mean? What type of training are we looking at? Um, I just wanted to kind of get a better understanding what the specifics was for that.
Okay, you want me to talk about the training, how we.
Yeah.
Yeah, so one of the things, uh, for us is, uh, obviously, um, you know, we do firearms training, defensive tactics training, use of force training, but we use base, using a reality-based training. So we actually put officers in different scenarios where they may have to make a decision on, oh, no use of force or use of force. Or if they go hands-on, you might do lots of BT training, but at some point, how do you apply that in real life? So in a controlled environment, we try to put officers into that re, the reality of actually wrestling with someone, whether you draw your taser, whether you use a, a chemical agent. So we try to put them into that situation, we respond, we evaluate, and if they need additional training, we provide additional training. So it, it's a lot more time intensive, but we feel that our officers are better prepared uh, to respond to use force incident. Now you're going to have wide range of skill and ability. People, officers need to min, meet the minimum standard, but there's a wide range of skills and ability because we're rate, we're hiring from, uh, you know, from our residents. from our residents, you know, the, the citizens, you know, the police is the public. So I hope that gives you a little base answer, but we, we train quite a bit. We train about eight months out of the year on our overlap days.
So let me just kind of zero in a little bit. As, as my colleagues have indicated, you know this extremely well, Chief. Obviously, we have a very diverse community. We have very cultural, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not coming to me right now, but we're enriched by very many different cultures just here alone in Federal Way. So can you go over, and again, you don't have to do the details. I understand, but what is your culture, identity, race, equity, whatever you want to call it, all that training look like? And, and I mean, how much of the budget is, is just on that alone?
Okay, so before the Great Recession, our training budget was, I think, just over a hundred thousand, a hundred and two thousand dollars. During the Great Recession, when we did cut back, our training budget now is eighty-one thousand dollars. So each command level person gets a budget and there's an allocation based on number of staff that are assigned. So our training budget is eighty-one thousand dollars for a hundred and seventy people.
Okay, and then what, what is, is there any sort of equity, race, culture, identity type training or even disabilities? Learn how to work with a person with disabilities that's got stabbed by a police officer? I mean, what does that training look like?
Sure, you know, fair, so every year we provide, you know, fair impartial policing training. Every employee, we call it the chief's address, every employee will meet with me. I do about six or seven sessions annually in February. And I talk about our core values. But I think the key thing is making sure that we bring right people into the organization and diversity is a factor. Recently, we've been hiring a lot of female officers. For a long time, we had a hard time recruiting female officers. But we've, we've recently have hired lots of female officers. We are hiring minority officers. Our goal is to try to have a more diverse police department. But like it, like all other police department, it's been a challenge. Particularly hiring African-American candidates to get black candidates to test and bring them into the organization. I do have one African-American officer in the academy now. We have another officer waiting to start with our agency who's African-American. But the key thing is you want to bring, you know, right people into your, into your organization that's service-oriented and that's going to serve us well. So that's one of the key things of having a healthy culture. And one of the things I do want to mention is that comparing our use of force with other jurisdictions of our comparable size, we, we have lower level of force. And I think our reality-based training, higher level of training, being accredited does make a difference. And last year, we had fifty-seven use-of-force incident total. And that's about a forty, thirty, forty percent drop-off than what it was seven, eight years ago. So we've been putting a lot of focus organizationally to impact that in a positive way. And so I think one of the measurements that we look at is number of use-of-force incidents. And of seventy-five thousand, you know, law enforcement, I mean, we're use-of-force is just a fraction of, you know, what we do, so.
Yeah, and I think that's really good to hear that, Chief, and I really appreciate that. Obviously, you want the, the, the level of force, I forgot how exactly you said it. The use of force is how you said it. You want that number to dwindle. But and that certainly depends on, on the situation. You guys have been trained and not me, obviously, you know. So, so I, I guess where I'm getting at is, is I wonder what it would look like if, if and this is, how do I say this? I wonder what it would look like for the police department to put a, a, a authentic race and equity, cultural identity, disabilities training, an actual training where you have a professional coming in to train your officers, you know. I don't want to go into the details because it's not my job to, to do the day-to-day stuff. But I, I really think that there should be some sort of funding set aside for, to, to pay, to bring in a trainer to really authentically train all, all personnels within the police department. And I think Councilor Tran is right, and I think some of our colleagues are right. And I know you believe in this too, Chief, and that's, you know, i- it's going to take a village of, of people to come together to continue to and hopefully build trust. And I think just by even something like this or even having body cam discussions. You know, i- it, the reality is, Chief, that it sends the message to our citizens that, okay, the policymakers are listening and are being responsive. And obviously, our job is, like all of us, is to bring those issues forth and try to find a way to say, we hear you, so we're going to act on it. And your department and your men and women that are serving in a civilian capacity or non-civilian capacity are doing phenomenal. I know they are. But I, I, I think it's worthy to have a very much more zero-end discussion on how much funding would it take to put on a, a good training? And I, I assume one of my colleagues have, has more information on this. You know, I know a few trainers myself that I think could be good. But again, I don't want to get into the day-to-day. But as a policymaker, I think that's really important that, that we see some sort of funding dedicated just for the, the, the areas of disabilities, culture, race and equity training for, for law enforcement officers and, and for the department. So, so that was what, where I wanted to kind of get into.
Let me just ask real quick, Chief, does that, does that training occur now?
Yeah, we provide harassment training, bias-based training. I think Councilmember Moore is talking about bringing someone from outside, but we use different sources. We provide some training, whether it's through the academy or through online training. So we do provide, it's required training that we have to go through, all of our employees.
Okay, I, I, and Chief, what I'll do is I'll go offline and kind of see if we can meet to kind of get a better understanding what, what that is. So Mayor, I think that's, oh, Lead, that program, I, I think there's, there's a value in there as well. I've seen it for a number of years now. So I'm glad to hear, kind of hear it pop up again, but I think there's value in that program, whether it's now or in the future, but for us to discuss. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see Councilmember Sefa Dawson, did you have another question? Oh, got to unmute.
Sorry about that. So, thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for answering all these questions. I know they're tough. But I do want, I have a little pushback against what you said around people who get arrested or crime. I, I totally agree with you around economic disadvantage. I agree about education. All those are absolute factors and I'm with you on that. However, I've said this before, when I say I worry about my three sons, it's genuine. It's from my heart and I, I do want, I just wanted to push back because not everyone, especially black people, we saw it in their recent years. I know it's come to the forefront because their people have cameras. So I don't know what used to happen when we didn't have cameras available. So I just don't want you to undermine the fact that, that black people do get arrested at a higher proportion. And so I'm, I'm glad Councilmember Hong brought it up. And it's, it's just that response that triggered me to, to answer to it. And so it does happen, we've seen it. More black people are incarcerated, I mean, black people are incarcerated at a higher level. And I even remember hearing the, the statistics where I thought, oh, my gosh, I can line up my three sons and wonder which ones are going to go to jail. Not because of what they've done, but just the circumstances that happened to Lita. So the bias is there and I'm, I, I appreciate the police department. Not everyone is bad. But I think to just say that it's just the criminals that we encounter is not accurate because we saw in the recent years that people who should not have died, died under, in the custody of our off, of officers. So in order to avoid that, in order to avoid the image, I think there are steps we need to take. If for no other reason, I want trust to be a factor here in our community. We want Federal Way to be different, we want Federal Way to be held to a better standard. And so I would love, I would appreciate that we are heard in this aspect. So I just had to say that because my concern is real and my kids are not criminals. But it could happen to them, right? So I just wanted to say that and I do appreciate the time. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, and everyone for giving me this opportunity to address my concern and what I wanted to push back. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. I just wanted to just say that cameras are, would be a tool in this tool belt that, that officers have. They're not the end-all to. It's, it's not going to make everybody happy. It's not going to address all the concerns that people might have. They're just a tool. And I think they're coming. I think the state will probably mandate it. And if the state does mandate it, I would expect that the state pay for it. And I would hope that as a city, we have our lobbyist in those meetings demanding that if it's going to be mandated, that it's paid for. Because it shouldn't fall on the backs of the cities to come up with millions of dollars to do that. But I wanted to, to bring up something else that I, when Councilmember Moore was speaking, came to me. We have a very diverse community and we have community members who English is not their pri- primary language. In fact, Spanish is probably a very frequent language here in Federal Way. And among other languages. But do we have officers on every shift that can respond if necessary to assist those who are either detained by the police or requesting assistance, calling 911, requesting assistance? And English isn't their language? Is that something that we have readily available?
In, in terms of Spanish, we do have quite a few officers who can speak Spanish. So I know we must have at least a dozen officers or more now. But we also have a language line that we can use when we need to. So when we work cases or working up a case, a lot of times we're using Spanish-speaking detectives to help out or an officer will come in to help out. So we do, with that particular language, we do have quite a few resource within, within the agency and some other languages. But I would say Spanish is by far most second language that's spoken here in the police department.
And my last comment is, as you all know, I have a son who's a police officer. And last night with the events going on around the country, I was happy, it was a Tuesday. I thought it was a Tuesday because we had a council meeting and he doesn't work on Tuesdays. It's his, it's his night off. And then I realized about midnight, it's Wednesday. Oh, my gosh, he's working. And then I worried about him. And I'm sure that you have officers in your department who have mothers just like me who worry about their children. It seems like officers are a target for some people and because of the uniform that they wear. And so one day we will have one day things will calm down. I, it can't come soon enough for all of us, for every single person. It can't come soon enough. And I want our officers to be safe, I want our citizens to be safe and I want I want people to trust each other and know that we're here to provide for them and to make their lives better. Both our officers' lives, our citizens' lives. Everyone, you know, we all live together, we're all in this together. And we have to get along and I think for the most part, we do get along. I think for the most part, we have good, good support for our police department here in Federal Way. And so anyway, thank you and I appreciate all the time you're dedicating to us tonight and answering our questions. Thank you very much.
Council President, I appreciate your comment as a mother of a police officer. But we got to have more communication in the community because the fear for police officers today and their family is real. So the fear goes both ways right now. Where officers die at a higher rate this year. We're going to break.
Yes.
It's going to be way high this year. Officers are getting assassinated. So this fear is real and so we need to have further discussions.
It is where, it, it, it is real. I know my daughter-in-law fills it. I know my little grandson who's nine recognizes it and it is real for. So I have nothing else to say, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Kershmar.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm receiving a text message that smartphones can be body cams for twenty dollars more a month than the current airtime each month. And also that phones are, are, you can get free phones pretty easily. So you might want to follow up on that, Chief. Getting phones and looking to see if smartphones can be used as body cams in the interim.
Yeah, IT handles the cell phones and we're through Verizon. I guess it's been brought up again, so I'll talk about it. It's really the ongoing cost. We can get the phones practically for free, we can upgrade them. It's the monthly fee with the phones. And that's where twelve thousand dollars comes for forty-one phones. We have quite a few officers still carrying flip phones.
Yeah. We need to look, we need to look at that. Also, Mayor, with regard to Councilmember Sefa Dawson's suggestion and also Council President, with regard to the legislative agenda, when I was in the legislature a few years back, that we did vote for, I was on the statewide homeless task force. And with, we did, I talked with the CEO of St. Francis. At any rate, the, we did pass a bill that provided for more beds for mentally ill folks who have been arrested usually on drugs. Because sometimes that's how they're treating their mental illness. And rather than releasing them into the community, that there would be home, community-based beds for the hospital to release them to. Because the problem with the hospital is they have nowhere to release them. And so in our legislative agenda, let's just add our voices to the fact that we may need more community-based beds for mentally ill folks that are being released from the hospital. We, we need to specifically narrow that down so that, you know, once they can get them into a treatment of some sort, then they can get them what they need. A lot of times, they're just simply not on their meds anymore, the proper medication. So anyway, so we might consider putting that on the legislative agenda. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question and a comment and that's, you know, again, I can't stress it enough and that's, you know, police discussions nowadays are just very sensitive conversations and rightfully so. And, and I think we need to be looking at this in a balanced way because a lot of our police officers need our support, their family members, just, just like Council President Honda has shared. And, and, but we're also having people, the black community being affected by it. You know, like Councilmember Lydia Safa has shared. So it really is just a balance and we just have to be extremely thoughtful and sensitive. So indeed, it is a difficult, difficult time, but what an awesome opportunity we have to rise to the occasion to, to say in our community, we see you. And we will get through this. And we have to support our officers, but we also need to support our community as well. And so Chief, and, and Mayor, maybe you have an answer too. At one time, we had, it's my understanding that we had a King County Dispute Center. We had a King County Dispute Resolution. And there was a relationship between the city of the Federal Way and the King County Dispute Center, if I'm saying it correctly, so correct me if I'm wrong with that. You know, i- it's my understanding that, that we haven't really had recent relationships, if, if Had recent relationships, i- if, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, can somebody enlighten me, because i- i- when we did use it, how was it used?
Well, this, that, that's in the civil context, uh, Councilmember Moore, I mean, I think.
The judge?
Yeah, that, that's, I think that's in a, that's in the, uh, uh, what, what Judge, um. Larson really initiated, well, it's okay, I mean, I, you know, obviously he's available, he's always, he's always available and would love to talk to you about it, but. I think when we get in the criminal context, and obviously, you guys know my, my, my prior job, this isn't a matter of, of. Somebody's bushes encroaching on your, you know, on yours, or somebody mowing your, you know, the side of your lawn. Th- these are crimes, and so when the police are called, it, it's some sort of. Emergency, there's some sort of theft, robbery, you know, sexual assault, domestic violence. You know, so this isn't the kind of thing in which you, um, you know, sit down with a mediator, it's. And, in fact, actually, that's really, you know, when I was the leader of the domestic violence unit, uh, the King County Prosecutor's Office, or the Domestic Violence Court. I was there on its very first day and was its very first leader. Uh, the concept was to take the fulcrum of the, of the prosecution away from the alleged victim. Uh, so, uh, you could make sure that there was, there's been a real, over the past thirty, forty, fifty years, there's been a real movement. To make sure that the state was the player, not the alleged victim, and not put the entire weight of the prosecution on, on victims to, for their own safety. Two-thirds of all women murdered in this country are murdered by their intimate partners. So, huh, that, that's the reality, so that, we're not talking about like. Sitting down with a mediator, um, that when people call the police, they need, you know, oftentimes it's because they're robbed or their window is shattered or. Somebody has broken into their home, so, I, I, that's, that's the, my perspective, but, uh, Chief.
Sure, Mayor, I, um, if there's opportunities to use King County dispute resolutions, sure, we can refer people to that. Um, the challenge there is both parties are, uh, have to be willing, and sometimes you don't get that type of, uh, cooperation. But there are a few instances, I wouldn't say it's widely used, uh, referred by the police department, but it is a resource there for us.
Thank you so much, guys, appreciate it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, um, Councilmember Berusso.
No, thank you, Mayor, I don't want to belabor this, Chief, um, so, I'm gonna back up a little bit and go back to accreditation. If you can, I don't know if you, I think you plan on doing this, um, or if you haven't done it already. When we talk about accreditation, is there a way to show or to put on a report or to come to council, or even the community? About how you met that accreditation, what, what the standards were for the accreditation. Were they met the accreditations, would you exceed them, um, how did you exceed them and things like that? I know that's, you don't have to do it tonight, but I know I think you have that in the works, is that true?
Sure, we could provide, uh, timely reports as we get them, sure.
Yeah, I'm kinda, I'm kinda looking, because I know when you got the accreditation, there, there's the standards that you had to meet. And so, the basis standards for clear was there, so did you, so I guess I'm asking again. Did you meet the standards, uh, uh, did you, was there minimum standards? Were they, did you just meet the minimum standards, or did you exceed the standards, I think that's what some folks are looking forward to, to say when you talk about accreditation, how did you go over those? How did you exceed those to get that standard?
Yeah, we're, we're certainly provided with a report, but we're, um. I would say we exceed standards, cause we, last accreditation, we're at the gold standard, so even with, within the national accreditation, we fall within. I, I think three percent of all the nationally accredited agencies, so you have to have so many good. Uh, accreditation, re-accreditations in order to even qualify for that, but we're clearly within the gold standard. In terms of being, uh, nationally credited, so we had a very good report and findings within our agency. That we're actually doing the things that we say that we do within our policy.
Good, good, like I said, it's, it's, it's bringing that back and saying, okay. Uh, when the, when our citizens or even us look at that, go, okay, here's where, how they met them, here's how they exceeded, and here's how they're exceeding, how. How they continue to meet them, and the policies they have to go through to go to that point, so it'd be very helpful. I know you're gonna do, probably do that in the later community meeting, I think it was, or maybe not, but, you know, I just wanted to. Just ask you about that and comment about that, that's all.
I, I feel like I have to say something now, that, um, I want you to know that we're not perfect. Uh, we're dealing with dynamic situations, and when we debrief things, there's always, hey, we could have done this better or that better, that's how we improve. But I don't wanna leave you, all of you, the policy group with the impression that the federal way police department is perfect, we never make mistakes, we, we're dealing with. Uh, very challenging situations, sometimes the outcome is exactly what we want it to be. But I want you to know that we're thoughtful, we're careful, we try to do the best we can, and we expect that from our leadership. And even officers expect that themselves, most of our investigations, standards investig- it come internally. That it gets reported by other officers, not really from the citizens, so. But we're not perfect, I want you to know that, there'll be times that we will fall short, we will make mistakes.
Thank you, Chief, hard job, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, any further questions? All right, we did it, uh, we are at seven thirty-five, let's take a ten-minute break to seven forty-five, uh, Council President Honda.
I just wanna thank the Chief once again, and for the, um. Council members for all of their questions, I think they were really good, and I know that this is a tough time. And, um. For policing and for city council members and cities, and, um, I think, uh, our. We asked good questions tonight, and thank you for being here. Didn't mean to interrupt, uh, Mayor, but.
Oh, it's okay.
Ten minutes would be great.
A- actually, no, I think you bring up a really good, good point, it was a great discussion, great questions. And I think, actually, as I was sitting here, listening to all the great questions, and, and really, i- it's like, we have, um. We've got a great council that is representing its community very ably this month, uh, tonight. And I think these questions were the kinds of questions that, that need to be asked, so. Uh, you know, I, if I, you know, if, if I was a mayor and just watching this, I'd be very thankful for all the, how deep you dug tonight.
I think the Seattle City Council should take note of how we did our conversation, so, great job, everybody.
I know, you guys do a great job.
We'll send the tape to them.
Uh, let's do that, a, a personal note by the Mayor, is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely, all right, hey, I, I'm really proud of our council, hey, you guys, so now we're at seven thirty-six, why don't we say? Um. Let's go seven forty-seven, you guys got it?
How about seven fifty?
Seven fifty.
All right, all right, seven fifty it is. Seven fifty it is, okay. Exactly, see what Ben has to deal with all the time, and then Wendy, okay, I'll, we'll, we'll.
Thank you.
Thirteen minutes, bye.
Okay, we've got, I've got 750 on the nose. Let's go ahead and get started here. Now we've got community development with Brian Davis.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council President and members of the council. Going to see if I can share my screen here. Okay. Thank you and good evening. My name is Brian Davis and the Community Development Director and this is the Community Development Proposed Budget for 21 and years 2021 and 2022. The organizational structure of the department has four divisions. It starts and ends with the permit center, the admin support and permit intake and issuance of permits. And that's supervised by Carrie Semmer and then we have three divisions. Other divisions, we have the planning division, building division and community services. Headed by Sarah, whom you're familiar with. Our mission briefly is to help maintain and improve the quality of life in Federway by managing and fostering the safe orderly and beneficial development and implementation of land use, building instruction, code enforcement and community service programs with the input from our citizens and within the policy framework provided by you. And two goals and objectives that we have, the first one is to balance the ever challenging aspect of of community development, which is balancing both the preservation of the environment or natural resources and couple that with the need for new development, growth, new jobs and growth opportunities. Secondly, another goal we have, since we also include, our department includes a community services is is to strengthen that effort and the social well being of economic health of the community by administering and monitoring grants as a community development block grant direct entitlement city. So I'm going to go through a couple of slides here. I've included quite a bit of text. I'm not going to read all the text. If you at any point have questions or want to dig a little bit deeper, I'm happy to do so, but I'm just going to highlight these, a few of these points. So this first one, I'm going to talk about the top one and that is the idea of archiving a lot of our records. Jennifer Marshall, our deputy clerk, yesterday in her presentation talked a lot about public records requests and the demand on resources at City Hall to fulfill those requests. And we, our department is actively engaged in archiving many of our records so that, as she mentioned, citizens will be able to access those records online at any time rather than submitting a formal request. And then we order the paper records from our archiving facility, bring them to City Hall, scan them and then give them to the to the customer. It's very time consuming, very expensive, so little by little, we archive our records as they come in and then we also try to put a dent in the records that have been archived, a hard copy. We make efforts to turn those to a digital copy. Okay, next slide. I'll touch on the last two. First of all, the floodplain permit process, this was a result from an audit by FEMA. They looked at all the cities in the region. They updated their regulatory framework and as a result, local jurisdictions that administer development permits had to make sure that they were in compliance with those with that regulatory framework or that updated regulatory framework that FEMA had. So we had to make some adjustments and they were presented to you, I think, just a, just a couple of months ago, if I recall correctly. And you did pass those, many thanks to you and we passed the audit with flying colors. So thank you for your assistance on that. Fortunately, Federway doesn't have a lot of floodplains, mostly along the sound area. But nonetheless, was a, was a, was a good effort. And then finally, the last one, the one I would emphasize is our passage of the historic preservation ordinance, the first of our history. Great step in the right direction towards helping the historic preservation resources of Federway. Okay, on this next one, let me talk about the top one briefly. We updated concomitant agreement. The formal name is Enchanted Park Concomitant Agreement. This is in relation to Wild Waves and so that's, that's one of our key economic partners in our community and so they had a desire to grow and expand and in order to do so, they needed to change the zoning agreement that it has with the city and we looked at their proposal, analyzed it, felt it was, it met the goals of the adopted policies and goals of the city and we were able to, to make that change. And then let me skip down to the last one. This is basically the sound transit point where we continue to work with sound transit. Federway is in a very unique position in regards to sound transit and I mentioned this before, but we effectively have three sound transit projects in our city. That's very unusual. Most cities have one project that's going through and then they deal with it. We have three, we have the Federway Link Extension, the one that is going to go from Angle Lake to, to the Transit Center. That's basically through the planning phase and we're now just going to be entering in the permitting and construction phase of that portion of the project. And then we have from that point, the Transit Center down to Tacoma. And that's another project that's just entering the planning phase. So it's, it's kind of two different projects. Sound Transit has two different teams. We'd love that luxury to have staff for two different teams, but we have one, just a couple of staff members in our department that's working on that. Both of those projects. And then the third project is the analysis for locating a operation and maintenance facility in somewhere along their south corridor and they've identified three locations, two of which are in Federway that you've, you're familiar with, one by, on the Christian Faith Center property and then further down just south of there, between there and the crossings area. So Sound Transit is a, is an ongoing accomplishment last year and will continue to be a goal for the years to come in our department and many other departments in the city, including Public Works and others. Okay, again, I'm not going to read all these, the ones I do want to highlight. I mentioned the Wild Waves, actually there was a development agreement after the concomitant agreement. So that one was also part of helping Wild Waves out. The format here is a little different on the, on the slide that you might have, so I just want to make it easier to read on this one slide, but the content's the same. IRG is, is, is one that you're, you're all familiar with. It's it was a, you know, difficult situation. The, the concomitant agreement for that development was also, you know, had that challenge of what I mentioned earlier of preserving natural features and then allowing, you know, optimal development opportunities. So when IRG came with various development proposals, proposals, there was really a kind of a no win, almost a no win decision for the city because, you know, whichever way we ruled on the development application, we were going to get attacked on either side. Many of you elected officials maybe received a lot of those concerns or attacks and so we, knowing that that was the case, that whether we ruled in favor or against or somewhere against or somewhere in between, we wanted to make sure that our division had a, our decision had a solid foundation moving forward because it was very likely that it was going to get appealed by whoever was not going to be happy. And in fact, both sides appealed the decision, the, each opposing side did appeal it. And I'm happy to say, very proud of the work that we did. It was basically upheld by both the hearing examiner and then upon appeal to the Superior Court. It was, it was upheld, the decision of the hearing examiner was upheld. And really pleased with the work of our staff who methodically went through that. Again, it's, it's a difficult decision, you know, I don't want to come across that we're, you know, spiking a ball in the end zone or like that. I just want to say that the work that we did on a difficult situation and waiting through the criteria and making a decision that would be legally sound. I have to say that I'm very proud of our, our staff for doing that. And we'll continue, you know, this is not the end either. We're going to continue to look at those proposals that they come in and make sure that you know, first of all, that they can meet the criteria and then if they do, what it's going to take to get there. So that was a big one and that's been brought up in various departments, law and the clerk and Public Works, I think I'll mention this project. It was very, it was, it was controversial and time consuming. Oops, let me go back, mentioned a few others. So Diagnostics, that's just right here next door, a firm that's coming to us from Kent. They're reoccupying one of the vacant buildings over here, the former warehouse or buildings over here. They're going to be a great addition to the city and we're working with them on getting their, their lab and office set up. Traditions is the big new multifamily senior housing in downtown that you see. They, they did a, the design that they, you know, went through our design review that we have adopted on, on code. And they, they, they did a good job, but you know, a lot of developers tend to, you know, fight us on that and say, can we cut corners here, cut corners there? And they came in and they, you know, they designed it without any, you know, any question. So that was, that was nice to see. And then Davita, Davita was a great project for the city. We had to do a conference plan amendment to realign a road to accommodate them and it receives support from the policy, you policymakers for which we appreciate is, you know, set to have about a thousand jobs to come to the city and so we're, we're pleased with that development. And then three elementary schools, very busy with the school district. Three new schools, we were able to get that in a timely fashion, you know, we received some criticism for that, but you know, after analysis, we looked at the numbers because we were curious if the criticism was justified. We looked at the numbers, compared it with everyone else in the region and we did an outstanding job and are really pleased with the staff on that. And then finally, the last one, online submittal process that we've been wanting to do for years and COVID kind of sped that up. So we do have something in place. It's kind of a, it's, it's a fix at this point. But it's, it's working well and customers are able, we're able to conduct business. Our permits are, are not significantly down, you know, on a five year average, our permits are about 90% of where they should be. So we're not seeing a huge decrease in permit activity and I think it's a result of our ability to, to, to take these in with these, with this online permitting submittal process. I'll touch on this later, but this is, again, this is just an interim solution so that we can eventually go to a more robust system that allows us even more flexibility in the customer, a better user interface for submitting their permits. Okay, just real briefly, we had had over 13,000 visits to the office or customers, I guess I should say. And we issued over 3,500 permits. That's, that's a number I kind of want you to, to remember. You know, we, on occasion, maybe it's because we made a mistake or maybe it's because the customer doesn't want to do what we ask them, but every now and then you might get a call from a customer. And when it's our fault, we own up to it. When it's their fault, it sometimes becomes a little bit more difficult to deal with. But I, I would say on, on average, since I've been here, this is, I'm going on four years here. You know, the, the amount of complaints that I get, that I hear about on an annual basis is maybe 15 to 20, I mean, it's not a lot. Compare that to the 3,500 other permits that are issued without even a whimper. So it's less than a percent that we're talking about of those really difficult cases. And like I said, when we, when it's our mistake, we own up to it. A lot of times it's, it's a customer that just simply doesn't want to do what we do and they make a big deal about it. So really proud of the work that our, our staff does and you know, the, the less than 1% of those issues that come up is a real testament to the work that they do. Okay, on this slide, I want to emphasize the, the third and the fourth checkmarks there. We were able to partner with other cities in South King County in starting the South King Housing and Homelessness Partnership. This is a, this is a collaboration between many, I think, I can't think of a city that's not a part of, any major city that's not a part of it in South King County. And it's been my privilege to sit on that board and just, and to interact with other elected officials and, and staff members on working towards helping with the homelessness situation and the lack of, of housing and really, and I mean, it's all across America, but more particularly in, in many of the urban areas of our country. And King County is no different. So that's, that's been great to, to be a part of and will continue to be part of that. And then we were able to satisfy the Department of Housing and Urban Development requirements for our CDPG action plans and that's a, a real testament to Sarah's work. Sarah is a, is a 2.3 FTE operation and she does an incredible job with the, with the staffing that she has to get all these, these projects done. And also to react to a lot of the issues that have happened of late. So that's a great, great accomplishment for, for human services, as is the top one there, the consolidated plan for CDPG for the next five years. That's, that's something that is, that's a Herculean effort on her part. I mentioned the HUD recognition for our grant program. Great to be, to have that recognition. And then finally, the last one made some changes to our grant application and criteria and also helped that to be a more you know, paperless process. I'm just going to talk about the last one here real quick. And again, if, if, if you want to talk about any of these, I'm happy to, but I'm for the sake of time and I'm just highlighting many of these, but I did want to include the text for your, for your reference and the, and the public's reference as well. Administered over a million dollars in human services grants. So that's a, it's a great feeling for that, that the city is able to help distribute that amount of aid in the methodical way that we, that we do. We take great consideration in each application that comes in and make sure that it, it can meet the criteria and we you know, we have a great commission that helps, helps us as well with the selection of those grants. We, the, the five year CDPG consulted plan, I mentioned that with the community needs assessment. Again, we, it'd be great if we could do these in different years. We had to do them in the same year. So that was a lot of work on, on Sarah's part. And then we, we're, we're looking at our grant making process with, with an equity lens evaluation to make sure that we're, we're reaching the right more, the more people and the people that could use it the most and would have access to those, those funds and the application and would be knowledgeable of the application process and we can assist them. And then last one, the flavor of Federway has, has been a great, it's, it's grown over the years and the last one that we did in 2019 was, was a huge success and had to make some adjustments this year in light of, you know, the situations that we're all dealing with. And so it's great to see that, that effort to continue to move forward. The, we implemented our very first severe weather shelter, which was a great accomplishment with, with the day center. I, I was fortunate one night to go help set up there with, with my kids and it was great to see the services that they provide and who would be served during those, during those times. And this is an issue that we can continue to work on, especially with the, you know, space limitations that we now have and the social distancing. This is a little bit more difficult. So we're looking at even more opportunities to, to expand this. And then implemented our, you know, one time grant applications for in light of COVID. So our anticipated projects, let me go through these real quick. Let me talk about the last one here. We're, we continue to make efforts to improve our development process, our permitting process, that is, excuse me. I mentioned at the retreat, our, our Kaizen effort. Kaizen means continuous improvement and we don't stop. Kaizen means continuous improvement, and we don't stop, and we have made some great improvements. That I'm proud of, but it's it's not something that we say, okay, we're done, and then we and then we move on. So we're continuously trying to improve that process. So as I mentioned before, the top bullet point, we, you know, I mentioned that we issued over a million dollars in in grants to various recipients. And and then continue to work on local and regional efforts to address housing and human services needs. I've also mentioned that we're going to continue to to look at our grant application process in human services and see if we can't. Make our reach a little wider and more targeted to the people needing it most. Make sure it's it's equitable for for all involved. And then. Last one, continue to achieve HUD's good, 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 good impression of the City of Federway's CDBG program. It's great to get their. Their kudos, and we 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 don't want to 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 stop that. Let's talk about the top two here. I mentioned it earlier, we expanding our online permitting capabilities. I mentioned the one we have now is an interim solution. We are in the process right now of. Working on onboarding a new permitting system that will will broaden our. Our abilities and make it even more efficient. And this is again, is in light of the goals that we have to be. Lean and efficient. And a lot of times when we introduce new processes. There's a, there can be a tendency to sort of add. A little bit of a waste to the to the process. And so we want to make sure that with the new system. That we're not adding any waste and that any waste that is occurring that we can repurpose that and. Give it as added value back to the customer with a positive experience and a timely issued. Experience. And then the e permitting system, I mentioned that as well. Mentioned lean again. And then we work with our South King Fire and Rescue Partner. If everything, they're just right next door to me down the hall. It's great to have them in the building. We we talk all the time about projects that we're working on jointly. And they've been great to work with on our, you know, as we as we move our permits on online, they've been outstanding partners in that effort. So that's the numbers. Those are the numbers in your budget book. That's the overall. That's just for reference. I'm not going to go into that. We can in a minute. But the overall proposal is. There's your, there's your two years, four point eight eight in twenty twenty one and four point three five six million in twenty twenty two. It's general fund, Prop One Fund and the CDBG Fund. Those are our funds. So what's, where are we at? So we had an increase of point five percent and for, you know, a budget of four, almost five million. It's not a lot we're talking about. So. We made some adjustments. We have a. We had a vacant associate planner position, which we eliminated, and as well as a development specialist. That a vacant, these are all vacant positions that we eliminated. We added a permit technician. It was a new position. It was a position that is enhancing the the other two development specialist positions. Again, this is an effort to help the the permit center and its efforts to to be efficient. And then. We added a. It says one point oh FTE. We we have, we have had two graffiti texts in the past, but their hours have not been. Full time, so I would characterize this as a as a. Adding hours to that position. Effectively, it's one FTE. But we've historically had two people with that effort, and it really, the job really needs two people. But we're expanding those hours to where we can have two full time graffiti techs and. And that'll be great with with the work that we do. So service and charges is a little trickier because our budgeting is biennial. And CDBG has a different schedule than us. We do a lot of different adjustments throughout. The budgeting process, not necessarily right now, and we're talking about at the beginning of our biennial budget. So there's a reflection in the budget that we're decreasing our services charges by a lot. This is due to our our CDBG, the timing of it. But it is. This, this is something that will eventually. Become clear as, you know, as we go throughout the year and, you know, we get CDBG allocations and. Will be coming to the council to brief you on that. And if it requires a budget amendment, then we would, we would do that as well. And I believe that's it. So happy to answer any questions that you have, and I will. Stop sharing.
Okay, Council President Honda.
Thank you. Excuse me. Brian, thanks for being here tonight. Can you tell me how many planners you currently have in your department?
We have. We have. We have six in house. We have one vacancy. So once that vacancy is filled, we will have seven.
So the position that's eliminated would have made that eight?
Correct.
A city our size, how many planners do they normally have?
About about eight. That's about par. And seven is is doable. That the, what we looked at was. I mentioned earlier that our permits are about ninety percent of a five year average. The land use permits. That's that's quite a bit lower and. It's more like seventy percent. And so if. Right now, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that elimination and I in consultation with the mayor, knowing that he needed to provide a balanced budget, that just made fiscal sense to do that. If the land use permits pick up again, I might. Crawl into the mayor's office and say, I need it back, and we'll, we'll see what we can do. But it makes sense. It made sense to. To at least temporarily not fill that position and then and use that in the budget to balance things.
Okay. So I, council comes to you, to your department often on all your requesting different, different things. And oftentimes. We're told that you just don't have the staff to be able to do all that we, excuse me, all that we request of your department. So I'm concerned about losing a position. I would also ask about the. Rental. Inspection program, where that stands at?
Yeah, that is. So that has been, you know, to your point about lack of resources. So we, we. We have the staffing on the books. They're not filled right now. So until those seats are filled for that work to be done, we, it just hasn't happened. We have provided for funding. For a, you know, the rental inspection program is going to need some startup costs, and so we do have that accounted for next year. It's just a matter of us being able to get the program up and running, and so far we haven't haven't done that. And so when I, when I say we have enough. Planners, that's for, that's for the status quo. So to, to, you know, for you to have every request that you have of planning met, yes, that's that's not enough staff, but to maintain. Business to keep the the permits flowing. It's enough. It's not enough to do any meaningful. You know, answer the council. Hey, I need this new project. For the next six months, but that flexibility is not there.
So when we, as the council, we had quite the discussion at L U T C this month. On. Questions on multifamily and what's coming down the line and in zoning questions. So. In in twenty one and twenty two, if we. Came to you and said we wanted to to work on the zoning and we wanted to really examine our zoning, would you say that that's doable or that's not going to be doable?
For purposes of looking at housing or when you say look at zoning?
Um, purposes of downtown zoning around the Sound Transit area, around. The Sound Transit, the second station coming in in the south and. So that we can have. You know, so that it can meet what what our vision is. The areas around it.
Okay, so. If if there's a, when you say your vision, if it's different than what is currently in the. In the comp plan, then yeah, we need to have that discussion because right now all of our housing, well, I shouldn't say all of our, the majority. Supply is in the downtown core. There's a, there's a few pieces of land here and there throughout the city. That can be developed, but the the vast majority of our housing. Targets are are scheduled to be met in the in the core zones. So I mean, if that's, if there's, if we need to account for it somewhere else in the city, we need to move that to the suburbs or create more. You know, apartments in the single family areas or, you know, what other strategies? We can come up with, and yeah, we need to have that discussion. But right now we're intending to make the the downtown a. A commercial, economic and housing and transportation core.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Coach Mark. You're muted. Councilor Coach Mark, you're still muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Brian, I'd be very interested in seeing what that plan looks like for the downtown core. When's the last time we've updated our comprehensive plan or had a good look at our comprehensive plan?
I think it was, I think it was twenty, I think it was right before I got here in twenty fifteen, is what I want to say. We're due to, it's due to be updated. I believe. We have to, so the planned actions, that's for downtown, that has to be updated by twenty twenty four, I believe, is when it expires. So if we want to continue that. That planned action, and for just for reference, the planned action, basically is a. Is a large, I, well, I'm just speaking for the audience, that is a large planning effort to. Account for environmental factors, traffic factors for development proposals. And so. The downtown has that studied for the most part. And so to to continue that, to to update or to continue, we need to update it in twenty four. Otherwise, each individual project is is going to have to do. A a large amount of work for their for their projects in the downtown core.
Thank you, Brian. I know that we did the plan and action seat but quite a while ago. We started that, and it's certainly a boon for the developers who want to come into that area. But what I want to know is, for example, you know, I've had people coming to me about the traditions. Development for seniors in the downtown core, and that has. Income restrictions on it. In other words, you cannot have an income higher than a certain level, which is kind of like Shag, although traditions is higher. Income level than checks. What I'm wondering is, we have some kind of like. Gaps in what we're planning. One of the gaps would be no condos. We have not, we have some in the entire city. I want to know what we're planning. It does our comp plan, or do we just? Provide for condos, or does John Q developer come in and say, I want to build X, Y, Z, and he's allowed to build whatever he wants? And then we don't have any townhomes, you know? Do we have any plans for townhomes? Maybe not in the downtown core, but. You know, there are some on the fringes of Federal Way, but we don't have anything. There's a gap for seniors when they want to leave a big house, because a lot of seniors in this area have big houses on lots. That want to move into something else, but not necessarily low income or assisted living. So there's a gap there. There's a gap when our children want to buy something and can't afford to buy in this city, but they could afford to buy a condo. So we don't, we have that gap as well. So I would be really interested, not just myself, but I think the council as a whole. Should look at the comprehensive plan. And the other idea, Brian. When is the last time we've had input from citizens on what our downtown core should look like? When's the last time we've had people who came to? Like the PAC or some and and came in and said, well, gee, I think we should have this in the downtown or that in the downtown. I would like to have input from our citizens on what we think our downtown should look like. How high should we go? I think we can go up to ten or fifteen stories. I'm not sure we can go up to twenty. But, you know, I think that we should all have a look at that and, you know, and beyond that, without, I'm sorry, keep talking. The other thing I would like to do is have a general idea of how our regulations are restricting our current businesses and possibly. Future businesses. For example, I've had a restaurant come to me in the past. It may have been before you were there, Brian. But talking about, gosh, I want to remodel my kitchen. And they were told, well, if you're going to upgrade your kitchen, then you have to have more parking spaces and. And upgrade the landscaping outside your your business. Well, that didn't make sense to them, and it didn't make sense to me either. So I'm just wondering if there are any. I would just like to have a review of our comp plan with regard to what we're planning, how many apartments are being planned, whether they're market rate or below market rate. And then. You know, the gaps for the condos, the gaps for the townhomes, and then also, you know, how regulations, how restrictive are we? I'm just wondering all of those things. I'd like to have a review of the comp plan is what I'd like.
And and that's, I appreciate your comments. What I would, the answer that I would give is, yeah, that would be a great effort that we that we should do that. I guess what I would offer in the meantime is that we did receive. Hundred thousand dollars from the Department of Commerce. To conduct a housing action plan for the city, and we're right in the middle of that right now. We will be briefing the Planning Commission and the L U T C and Council periodically on our efforts as they. Well, I guess more on the outcomes rather than our efforts, the outcomes as they as they materialize. Just to keep you. Up to date on where that's headed, because I think that will answer a lot of the questions, Councilmember Coach Mark, that you just had. What types of housing do we have? What types of housing do we need? Were the people involved here that need these types of housing? And where should it be located? So that's, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you very much. What I really want to do is, we're the seven. Members of the council, including the mayor, that are elected to lead this city. With input from our citizens. And so I'm not sure who the housing action plan is going to be. And I know that it was a committee. I believe you told me that in the past, but I I really think that we need to be fully involved and give direction. To what happens here, because we're the ones that are going to direct the future of our city. And I I take that very, very seriously because I certainly don't want our city to become one way or the other. I want, I want a mix. We would be healthiest if we have a mix. Of healthy businesses and healthy places for people to live. Thank you.
Yeah, and I agree, and we will, we will have regular check ins with the council just to make sure that that. That path that is being taken is one that is in accordance with what the council wants.
Okay, great. Councilmember Sephados.
Once again, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brian. Actually, it's not even a question. I think I only have comments. When you were talking about the South King County Human Service, no, housing.
South King, South King. Housing, yes, skip, what we call it, South King Housing and Homeless Partnership.
Right. So I know CTEC wasn't a part. Did they join? That was my question.
I, that's a, that's a good question. I. I don't recall, but you know, Des Moines, Normandy Park, Buryan, all the ones nearby up there have are all in.
Right. Okay, and then. Councilmember Coach Mark, I don't know. I mean, you were at state, at the state, as a, you're a state legislator, so you might know better, but. I do remember at one point condos were hard to build because of the legal. Issues that they were facing, and so they, people were not building. So I don't know if that still holds. But maybe it's something that we could look into and and see if that's the case. And then the last thing, my my last comment for you, Brian, is I just wanted to say thank you to you and Sarah. About what we're doing with human services, with the, with all the funds that we've been giving out, and then. Especially the fact that you are considering using equity lens and the training that the Human Services Commission just got around this because it's really important. And we've been doing business as usual, and we've always funded agencies that were historically agencies that we have funded. And so. I think this also holds everyone accountable to a different degree. And so I do appreciate that the city is focusing on that for our human services, and hopefully we will. Move towards implementing something like that for all our. Move towards implementing something like that for all our different departments. Um, and so thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Mayor, can I answer Councilmember?
Of course.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you. That was, that was good for you, Councilmember, for bringing that up. That's the way it was in the past. However, a year or two ago, the state changed it. The problem was that the developers were not able to get insurance. That's what was. Creating the problem for that type of development, but that's changed. And if you will talk to any Realtor today, please feel free to do so. They will say that, yes, we do need to have condos, and that's what they believe the millennials want to buy.
Okay, no, I I just wanted, I just remembered that, so I was bringing it up as a question. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Council President Andre, you still have your hand up. Did you have another questions? Other question?
Uh, no, but I would like to uh echo. Councilmember Sephados and thanks, Sarah. And and Brian, but Sarah, for all of the hard work she's done, she has. Since COVID started, she's been doing the work of two or three people at least. I know she's been working on weekends. And at least she was. And um, I just appreciate that because we've had so many issues with taking. Care of people who needed extra assistance with food and housing and. It's it's just going to continue on and and um, she does a great job. So. So uh, thank you to her and thanks for reminding me to say something.
Thank you, Council President. I know that her her camera is off and she's muted, but I know she did hear you, so I I appreciate you mentioning that.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Brian, great, great work. Um, you know. It it feels good uh to see that some of the work that I've been advocating for uh actually uh. Uh, find its if its way i- in your department in this case, it would not. So I I appreciate you being responsive, Brian. Um, I know that you and I have had many uh conversations about, uh, and I think Councilor uh Hon Tran um. Said on his on on his own terms, uh, the importance of lean management and and how that could really better our system and really better um. It benefit the taxpayers, quite frankly, um, and businesses uh as well. So. Uh, thank you so much for being responsive to that, and I appreciate you continuing to invest. Um, in um. You know, in uh technologies and uh processes and times. So. Uh, thank you so much for that. I just wanted to say that uh as well. Um, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Moore. I appreciate it.
Okay, Council, any other questions? All right. Uh, thank you, Brian. Uh, great job.
No, thank you.
Okay, uh, now we move on to IT, and we've got Thomas Fitchner. Thomas?
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Council President, and members of the council. I'm just gonna get my stuff kind of arranged here, so it actually. Looks halfway decent. Um, hope that's okay. Thank you for the opportunity uh tonight to put on a suit, because I haven't worn one in about uh. Six, seven months, and uh it reminds me that uh COVID has brought a lot of things, including uh extra weight, because things are fitting a little tighter than they used to. So diet starts tonight. So um, in all seriousness, though, seriousness. Um, I appreciate the opportunity uh to present my uh budget as the IT department as an official director uh for the first time. Uh, before you tonight. And I will share my screen. I got too uh excited about starting to talk, and I realized that I don't have a PowerPoint up on a podium anymore. Um, and I preached to everybody else about this, and then I here I am. Dropping the ball. So organi- organizationally, I want to, I want to say thank you to my staff. Um, this is, this is them before you in a organizational chart. I've got um eight F T E uh that are that are funded as part of my my department. Um, and then one vacant position that we currently have filled with a temporary uh gentleman, Jerry Haynes. And Mayor Farrell has authorized earlier this year that that F T E uh can be filled, that vacancy can be filled. So we're going to be working on that. Uh, we got great feedback from uh from the staff about Jerry, and and he's just a great, great addition to our team. We uh, we do more than just work for the city. I mean, we always, obviously on our behalf, but we we um. We represent the city of Federway regionally. And these are some of the uh agencies that we that we work on. Valley Communications, obviously, is our dis- dispatch center. Um, and so uh, one of my guys, Xiao, uh goes over there and sits on the tech board and works with uh with, works with them. On any new updates uh that's being pushed out for the for the police cars uh in that dispatch system. In addition, our GIS um division. Works very closely with them uh as they are uh giving constant updates and everything to. Uh, to them to help with the mapping, to help the uh the officers with dispatch in the car. Um, C three is a community connectivity consortium. It's uh, we're a member of it. It's a regional fiber optic consortium. Uh, they're doing really great things, and it's a good thing to be a part of it. Uh, Safe City, as you know, is a five oh one C three nonprofit. Um, that we sit on the board of and uh and and we also kind of carry out the operational maintenance of that of that contract. And then finally, ACIS, um, and that is the Association of Counties and Cities Information Systems. Uh, we participate in that. We're a member of that. Um, and there that will actually come up here a little bit later in my my presentation. We used to have score on there, but uh, you know, not anymore. Um, but then seriously, we we keep uh contact with Adam Munson at at score, and you know, it just reminds us that. You know, all all of my colleagues in other agencies, no matter if it's a city, county, uh, or or even the jail. Um, we're all kind of dealing with the same thing, and uh and it's very refreshing to kind of hear everybody's. Uh, what process and what they're going through and their trials and tribulations and know that, you know, we're not alone in this. So in uh twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, in no particular order of priority, um, we we've, we've got some accomplishments here, and we've, we've actually done quite a good thing, quite a few good things. Um, GovQA is is one of those. Um, we got a grant from the state archivist. Uh, for for that system, for for year one of that system, I should should be clear. And it is a, it is a software as a service system, and it uh, it it's one of those that you have to keep paying on ongoing. Um, but it's, it's great. It's a, it's a really good system. Uh, it helps a lot of efficiencies. Um, you know, for staff as far as tracking. And and in, you know, the ingestion part of the request, um, trying to wave off certain requests uh for kind of a little bit of a. Uh, not not AI. It's it's not AI. It doesn't do the request for you, unfortunately, but um, it helps kind of. You know, see what you're asking as you're typing the request, and then it says, hey, you know, if you if you want, like uh, like Jennifer mentioned in her presentation yesterday. Um, tries to reduce that. So it's good, good software system. My building permit. Um, I don't really need to get in, go into that because uh Brian covered that pretty well uh tonight. Uh, storage area, network, and backup software. That's basically where all the city's data gets stored. It's on a physical device. Um, we've got a new one. We had the old one. It was slow and and not as, not as large in storage capacity. Uh, this new one is fantastic. It uses some of the cool uh new features such as deduplication and compression um on the hardware level. Uh, which is awesome, because uh we find that a lot of staff tend to store things on on various areas of our network, and this system. Uh, kind of detects that and then is able to reduce it. So instead of um, you know, a twenty megabyte PowerPoint presentation, you know, taking up, you know, sixty or eighty or a hundred. Uh, uh megabytes on the system, uh, this, this is smart enough to kind of reduce that. So it's, it's really helpful uh to try and keep an efficient use of our storage capacity. Um, thank you to to the mayor and the council. Um, we we are, we are very grateful to have the addition of one point O. We've been at seven F T E for for many years. And uh, we added, we were able to add one point O. So thank you very much. Uh, that has helped us out tremendously. The other thing with the cybersecurity assessment is another, is another good thing that the mayor and council has pushed for. Um, you guys heard the results of that in exec session. Um, it's, we've got a, we've got a long road ahead of us uh to to. Uh, to kind of correct some of those uh challenges that 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 we're faced, but we're not alone. Again, um, you know, we're, we're all in this as far as regionally and. And uh, and you know, it's, this isn't something that we're. Really, really deficient in. Um, we've, we've got some stuff that we're going to do. Um, and and thanks to the mayor and his recommendations. Um, we're going to to take a huge step forward, and you'll see that in a moment. And uh, Eyes on Federway is going to be a great program. Uh, Mayor announced it in his State of the City speech, uh, and a couple of directors have referenced it tonight. And uh, and last night, uh, C Click Fix is going to be kind of the engine, so to speak, behind Eyes on Federway. It's a software that is going to be the app and uh help us with with uh customer requests. Um, and the cool thing about this is um, while it is going to shine a light on a lot of stuff, because it's going to make things easy, or make things uh, make the process. Easy for s- uh citizens to report things. Uh, it will also help us track and figure out where we, where we um. Where we have hotspots, uh, and we're able to integrate that with other systems for additional efficiency. Uh, and finally, C just thought it uh is something that is still ongoing. Uh, we are working through it, and due to COVID, it's kind of taking a little bit longer, but we will be working on getting this passed as well. COVID nineteen has also brought a a number of of new things and challenges. Um, and reference there in the, in the logo is Zoom uh that we're using today. And uh, who who would have thought we'd be doing a council meeting uh via Zoom uh even even in January or February of this year? And and now here we are. So that's been a huge time saver. Uh, well, for it, it actually makes it possible. Uh, because before, before this technology, if this happened, this pandemic happened ten years ago, I don't, I don't know where we would be, because we wouldn't have the the technology that we do today. Um, we've, as the judge mentioned tonight, the courtroom audio video upgrades, that that's been a huge uh process that we've, we've undertaken, and thanks to vendor, we've, we've got it taken care of. A remote access for staff, among other technology upgrades. It's been a huge amount of work for us. Um, but it's, we've made giant leaps forward. Also upgraded the police vehicle routers uh in the car. It's a, it's a big project. You have to actually touch every single uh police car and uh. Have to account for it and set it up and you purchase everything and and uh and get it, get it transitioned out. So it's a, it's good, new technology. Uh, as as cellular services have increased or or modified. It, this, this new technology takes care of that. It's, they're not five G, though, unfortunately, um, but they're the better versions of four G. And public works, I mean, with the adaptive traffic system they're putting in, uh, we manage the the fiber optic. It it that. That whole thing is going to run over the fiber optic network that that we manage, uh, the same network that connects a lot of our buildings or some of our buildings. Um, cameras in in the police substations. And then um, we built several dat- upgraded the GIS system, which has empowered us to also build several dashboard dashboards with uh new GIS technologies. And this is a huge leap forward. We we were, we were kind of stagnant for a while due to some uh vendor incompatibilities. Um, but we've, we've upgraded uh to to the new ten point seven point one. And um, and it's, it's a, it's a major difference. And um, in the next slide is something that uh is one of the example of a dashboard that is live currently. On uh the community development website. Um, and this shows all the new projects that are in Federway right now. And if you click on them. Um, it gives you a little bit of a status and who the contacts are and a little description. So it's actually very helpful. Uh, and our our GIS analyst, Stacy Curry, we worked uh really well with um, uh, community developments, uh planners. To to develop this. And so it's been a, been quite a bit of work, but it's a great result. And that's just, that's just the beginning. Um, this is, this is a way uh kind of going back um to represent data. And uh, the GIS system you you think is purely map based, but there's a lot more to it than that. Um, if you guys remember the Johns Hopkins map that was tracking the COVID cases this year, um, that's all GIS. It's the same site, same software. Um, that that we're using here. Uh, and and that, uh, while it's globally, um, mapping it, kind of the hotspots. Um, it it all bases on data, and so we can do a lot with uh with this new GIS platform. It's a lot more than making maps these days. So continuing uh our accomplishments. We've deployed, as as the chief mentioned uh tonight, um, several new, new and replacement uh Safe City cameras, thanks to the uh state. Grant uh that that we got. Um, and there's still more to come, uh, because we also received another state grant, and it's coming up a little bit sooner or a little bit later in the presentation. Um, Windows ten Office twenty nineteen upgrade is something that we still need to do. We still have Windows seven and twenty ten. Um, workstations out there, and that's, that is a big issue for us, a big risk, actually. So we're working feverishly on getting that done. My team is, is is working tirelessly on that. Um, and two new, by the end of the year, uh, we got two new police substations uh on the line. Uh, the one is in Twin Lakes, and the other one is that Pacific Highway South one. And annual equipment replacement, uh, typical. Computers age, um, they reach the end of life, servers, printers, copiers, et cetera, and uh and we have, we have to replace them. Among numerous public records request searches, and uh our our department provides a lot of this facilitates. A lot of that first step in pulling emails out of our, of our email archive system. Um, as the process for the uh public records kind of begins, and then we hand that off for review. So, but we we pretty much touch every single one of those. And not to mention, uh, another one that actually did not include on here is the school district uh Wi-Fi. Uh, we're working with them uh just recently. Um, Dr. Campbell and and Mayor Farrell uh kind of got together and uh and we're trying to pilot a couple of different locations within the city. Um, Uptown Square and Pavilions to to provide uh free Wi-Fi for uh students and. And other community members to to engage in remote learning specifically. So this is the overview of the IT budget, um, kind of what uh twenty twenty adjusted was or is, and uh what twenty one, twenty two proposed would be in kind of the changes from twenty to twenty one. Uh, majority that you'll see there is going to be service charges, and there's a reason why, and that's coming up soon. Um, I'll start by the funded new program requests. Um, I'm not going to touch on every single one of these, because there's a, a couple of them that I'm going to call out specifically later in the presentation. Um, the first one is staff, department staff reorg. There's a, there's a few members of uh my team that are kind of operating at a different level. Um, and this is going to re kind of reorganize things and uh and make sure that everybody's fairly compensated for the work they do. Microsoft EA agreement is uh, it's an increase in there, because, well, they can. Uh, they're Microsoft, and they dictate uh the price of their software. Uh, fortunately, we are able to piggyback on a State of Washington contract uh that the Department of Enterprise Services uh manages, and they are. Uh, able to, you know, we, we as an organization uh with our employee count uh does not qualify for a. Um, as they put it, a level D uh discount, and with the state kind of grabbing all of the agencies together, we do, and so we're able to get that uh. That software as cheap as we probably can. Um, the other thing is cellular service. Um, that pretty much is due to additional phones, uh lines, like um, like Councilmember Tran and Deputy Chief. Or sorry, not deputies, the chief, uh, talked about earlier. Um, there are other lines that we have had to activate. Um, in the city, and this is to uh address those. Due to the business needs. And uh, just to confirm, we do buy, um, we buy all of our cellular service off of a state contract as well. Um, whether it be through Verizon or First Net slash AT&amp;T, uh, and also even T-Mobile. Uh, that's all negotiated at a state rate, and we rarely pay for phones. Um, they're pretty much either ninety nine cents or free when we buy them. Um, and then finally, the uh, you'll notice the Amanda seven upgrade is the permit automation fee funded, so it's not really in my budget here. It's a separate fund. Um, and that is budgeted for twenty one and twenty two, because there's an ongoing cost to the additional uh modules that we're, there are going to be an additional module that we're going to buy. Um, and the hundred eighty one thousand, because it's so much, is is due to professional services to help us with that upgrade. And there is a little bit more on that later. Uh, these, I'm not going to spend a ton of time on, because it's just basically the capital reserves, uh, equipment that we need to replace, desktop PCs, laptops, printers, servers, et cetera, et cetera. And then same thing here, just a little continuing. Um, and then there was also a request that that I did ask for, uh, that were not funded as part of this budget or the mayor's recommended budget. Um, and and there's a couple of things on here. I'm going to touch on a, on a few a little bit later. Um, but the first thing is like uh fiber, fiber location services. Um, is basically an add-on to a public works contract. We don't have anybody in staff or on staff that um. Has the ability to locate fiber, um, as they would with, you recall the eight one one, you know, call before you dig service line. Um, our, our, our infrastructure is not lo- located. Um, and so that it, there's a risk to the city there. Um, but we do the best we can to to, you know, we've labeled it uh where where we can. There's still an ongoing project to do that citywide. Um, but this is something that that we'll need to do uh definitely eventually. Then uh, the IT training budget is another one that I I I'd like to do. We, we had it previously, but it was slashed um due kind of to the recession. It's nice to kind of keep staff up to date. Um, this year I was able to use a little bit of money. I got to deal with uh one of the contract agencies, and uh we're going to do some training. And I got more on that a little bit later. And we've, to kind of combat that, we've uh, we've largely used our Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. Uh, it comes with thirty days worth of training. Uh, it comes with 30 days worth of training. Um, and it's either in person or online and a lot of the in-person training is just going away. And it's pretty much predominantly shifting to, um, online. And so that's made it easier for us to, to attend. And then we just use those vouchers. But a lot of times that's just for Microsoft products and we do a lot more than just Microsoft here. Uh, and then on call, uh, is due to 24/7 city that we are. The police operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and, uh, and our department does not. Um, although we still do get calls, uh, you talk to Brian and myself, we get, uh, it, it's, it's almost, almost one a week. Sometimes less, sometimes more, it just depends. Um, you know, you gotta love the, the 10 A, 10 PM, 12, 12, uh, midnight and so on calls. But it just kind of reaffirms that we are a large city. Um, and, and we're not, uh, we're not one of those that are just kind of small and no, it's okay. Just we'll deal with that in the morning. There, you know, these, these officers, um, you know, when there's a problem, they, a lot of times, you know, it's, they can't do their job. So, uh, we, we gotta work there to fix it. And then there's another one on there, the Esri, uh, Art GIS enterprise agreement. Um, a lot of cities are kind of transitioning to this. It is a definitely a lot more money than what we're paying today currently. We're right around $30,000 a year and this would be an additional 46 to 48,000. Um, and the reason for that is because it actually licenses, um, the product for, for the entire city. And there's a lot of benefits to this, um, especially as we grow our GIS system. Uh, unfortunately, the enterprise agreement is based on population and the next threshold, uh, number is, is a hundred thousand. And we're knocking right at that door. It's likely that the census is going to be, uh, over a hundred thousand. And then we'll be in that next tier. So, um, you know, it, it'll, it'll be more than this the, the next time I ask for it. And then finally, the GIS drone and software, it's the drone, drone equipment is really cool. It, it, it provides us, uh, you know, the police, police use it for one purpose. This is a different purpose. That the drones for, for our purposes would be to, to surveil an area, whether it be for code compliance or even for police, um, after the fact. Uh, or, or a, uh, pre, pre-site, um, security analysis or, or something of that nature. We fly the drone, um, download the stuff right into our GIS system. And then we can, we can analyze that and, and, and do really cool stuff with it. Um, and so that, that actually would be very helpful, um, because it's near real time. Same thing with public works, like if we had a landslide, um, fly the drone real quick, um, kind of survey the scene, throw that into a GIS system. Kind of figure out what we need to do. It's, um, it's cool technology. But should any additional revenue become available in future budgets? These are definitely, uh, the requests that are listed in order of priority. And you'll probably notice that there's one thing I didn't talk about, that's, that's FTE personnel. Uh, there are four of them on here, um, and there is, there's a reason for that. If we look at the city and I've updated this, you've seen this chart before, um, very similar style. I've updated it for 2020. And these are all the exact numbers. And basically this chart is showing you the red bar, um, or the red, red data, uh, with the bar graph is showing you, uh, the total city FTE for each one of those agencies. And then the blue line is showing you, um, the total IT staff for each one of those. And the reason we look at this is because you, it's important to see city FTE size because sometimes cities are more full service. Uh, they might have water, sewer or fire, um, than others. And so, um, it just because, you know, Kent has 37 doesn't necessarily mean that we need 37. If I had 37 employees, they'd just be sitting around doing surfing the internet. Um, we, we don't need that many for the services that we provide. Um, and so it's important to, to kind of, but they are a bigger city. You see they're almost, um, uh, almost 800 FTE. So what I do is I take a look and I divide that and I get a ratio of, of how many city FTE to one IT person, um, that we support. And if you look here, um, federal way is at, at the end and we were worse before. And we, you know, thanks to that, that 1.0 FTE that, uh, mayor and council approved, that was, that was really key to kind of get us, get us down into the, in the forties. We're in the high forties before. And so, um, if you notice the difference between this chart now versus late before was, uh, Bellevue was in the lead. Now, Burian added one FTE in their IT department and Kent added several, um, and they are now in the lead. So you might ask, so if I, if, if we, if we added all four, just, just for sake of, of hypothetically, where would that put us? And the answer to that question is right about 28.7. And so it, it gets us into that 20, uh, ballpark. And, uh, and that's, that's a pretty good place to be, especially when I look at what functions they would be providing this, the city. As well as, um, is kind of, you know, the, the workload that we have. And, you know, that's one of those things that, you know, I, there's, there's one on here. There's admin assistant is number one. And, and networking server person is number two. And that, the reason for that is admin kind of helps everybody out. So that, um, you know, we're not, I'm not spending my professional staff time, uh, doing a lot of admin duties. Um, and I have one person that's actually doing that and, and being more organized, uh, more consistent and just better off all. And, uh, you know, the city attorney, Ryan Call said it best. He's like, it's a force multiplier. And it really is. Admin is a valuable, hugely valuable asset to any, any department. And it would be, it would be great for us. And so, uh, the second thing is with, with me, one of the things that came out of the, the security assessment is, you know, you've got a director that's a very much a working director. And, um, and that also is, is something that, uh, you know, I started the city, uh, as a, as a help desk temporary technician. And then I got hired on as a, as a network analyst. And, uh, and, and, you know, I've taken on a lot of server responsibilities, but I've never been able to get rid of them. Um, and so I, here I am, I'm still doing, um, you know, managerial, I'm supposed to be doing managerial stuff. And I'm still actually, uh, doing a lot of technical work on the backend too. So, but as, as that was not, those were not funded and, and there's, you know, this is a tough budget, uh, for, for every department. And every department, um, is, is, it has needs that were not funded and, and that's okay. I mean, it's a, it's part of prioritization and there is a clear, uh, priority in this particular budget. And, and IT will be successful with this proposed budget, um, as, as it is. And the security focus is priority number one. And, and there's, there's, there's a reason for that. And, and then we have the security, security consultant assistance, which was, which was approved or, or as part of the recommended, uh, budget. And there's more on that a little bit later. But the key thing that's going to help us is prioritization and setting clear expectations in lieu of the additional FTEs. Prioritization is going to be something that's going to help us out tremendously. The other thing is help desk software is going to, is, is going to help us out. Right now we use an open source software for our help desk system. Um, it is, it is highly out of date. Um, it's, it's got some challenges and we can't really do good reporting on it. And so we don't really have a lot of good analytics based on our, the, the trends that we're seeing and, and the type of calls that we're seeing. Uh, because the software just does not, it's very cumbersome and doesn't support that. So what, what the mayor has, uh, has recommended is, is more, uh, a new cell, hop, sorry, a new IT help desk software. Um, which will help three things specifically. Number one is it'll be able to track projects as well as the subtasks for each project. So that way we can say, okay, well, public works, we've got seven open projects for you guys. If you guys want to add another one, where do you want us to prioritize that? Right now we don't really have a system that is tracking that. Um, secondly is just handle the standard help desk requests much better and more efficiently. Um, and then we can also set, you know, kind of priority level, uh, so as they come in, we can assign them for a, a proper like service level agreement. Say, hey, you know, for a priority one emergency issue, you know, we're going to get to you as soon as possible. You know, and then next one, maybe, maybe that particular business day and so on and so forth. And then finally is an asset tracking tool, and that's something that, uh, was out of one of the finance audits. Uh, our current, uh, asset tracking system is largely based on access database, AKA an Excel spreadsheet. A glorified Excel spreadsheet. And, and, and that's just not, not acceptable, um, especially for the amount of assets that we have. And so this system will, will track all three and it'll be much better and it'll help us, uh, be much more efficient. And then finally, the ITIL, so information technology infrastructure library. You might ask, what, what, what is that? And, and that basically started in the eighties from the United Kingdom's, uh, their government's, uh, central computer and telecommunications, uh, agency. And they basically said, we, we need, we need a set of processes and procedures and, and whatnot, um, to help manage IT because IT is becoming a thing. You know, they realized this and, um, and they, they developed this and it, it has grown and modified, morphed kind of over the years. Effectively, it's just a service manager. So if you look at, if you Google search Wikipedia and, uh, or bring up, bring up Wikipedia. ITL there is defined as a set of detailed practices for IT agency service management. That focuses on aligning IT services with the needs of the business. And that's what we do. You know, our customers are the other departments. It is the business. And so, um, this is set of tools that help us with our processes, get better aligned with, with our business customers. So it's going to be a huge step forward for us. So some of the key anticipated projects, and, and we touched on this a little bit before. The big thing is this, this coming year, um, specifically 21 is follow through on them, on the cybersecurity assessment with the mayor's proposed items. One of the things that he did propose, um, is right, adding the security assault, the security consultant to assist in implementation of an IT security government structure and various policies and procedures. This was one of their, uh, top, uh, recommendations. And it's something that we need, um, kind of, we, we are a, we are a big city now. And these are kind of the, the kind of foundational things that we need to have so that we can operate on. Um, the governance structure will help us, um, with, with prioritization as well. And then, and that's going to be a huge, huge piece. The second thing is the security awareness training. Um, and that's, that's supposed to be, um, kind of represented by the, uh, by the, by the graphic there with the guy. The little robber looking guy with a bit, and you know, sock hat on, he's fishing, fishing for, for your information. And, and this is something that, that is, was a high recommendation as well. And this is something that we need to do and other cities are doing it. Uh, and it's not just cities. It's not just, you know, government. You've got private, private industry as well because, um, at the end of the day, uh, one of our biggest risks, uh, you know, not, not to, not to, not to sound bad is, is the users. You know, if, if you're on there and you're just, you're browsing, you got an email, um, and it's got a link and you click on it accidentally. And, and that's it. A lot of times that's game over. So this, this, uh, security awareness training is going to help us out tremendously. And, and I've envisioned this very similar to, uh, drug and alcohol, uh, training for, for employees, sexual harassment. And, and diversity training, all the, it's, it's the same thing. It needs to happen every year, uh, and, and kind of multiple times a year. Um, and so it's very important, um, you know, not only for people's professional life, but also their personal life. So this is going to help, help people just overall well-rounded. Second thing is, uh, the third thing is a multi-factor authentication. Um, and that is represented by the graphic below, uh, not the, not the dark one, but the one to the, to the left, um, where you have a password. And you have the proof that it's you. So something you know, something you have, two factors equals success. Um, and that's something that is a, uh, kind of one of those low hanging fruits, so to speak, of, of IT security. It, it is definitely not, and, and every time I say security, um, unfortunately, security is not convenient, never is. So we don't make things easier. Unfortunately, we make things more difficult for everybody. Um, but unfortunately it's just the world that we live in. So that is something that, that is approved as well. And, or, or recommended. And then finally, the dark trace network protection system, um, think Skynet. You remember, uh, you have any Terminator fans? It uses AI, um, to kind of sit on your network and listen. And it just listens and listens and it kind of gets a baseline. And then it looks for stuff that stands out. It's the anomalies, the things that like, hey, this workstation or this laptop doesn't normally talk to the server this much. Now it has, now it is. So red flag. And the cool part about this is it also has a feature that will prevent that and, and see that and then shut it down immediately. Um, it uses AI technology for that. Uh, it's really cool and it's one of those things that, um, that will be helpful for the city of federal way, especially on, on network side. Nothing's foolproof, but, but all these things are tools, um, that help us become more secure and bolster our, our, our security posture. And finally, the disaster backup and recovery system is also, uh, on the recommended, uh, list. Uh, that is, that is very critical, uh, because, uh, it's either you're paying a ransom or you're restoring from backup if you get hit with some of this stuff. And, uh, and, and, you know, this is to get a, have a good, solid disaster backup and recovery system is important. Unfortunately, I was hoping that we'd be, uh, able to escape the world of tape backup. But it sounds like that's not the case in, in a lot of the, uh, recommendations. So you gotta have what's called an air gap, um, between the systems. Otherwise, some of this ransomware can just sit on or attack, uh, your, your backups. And so, uh, we need to, we need to design and figure a system that, uh, that will, um, could be resilient to that. Some other key projects, we obviously we talked about the IT IL certification for all staff. Windows seven. So one of the things we've tried to mitigate is, uh, we've got Windows seven, uh, extended security, uh, updates in place. And so we had to pay Microsoft for that. Um, but that helps us, uh, become a C just compliant, uh, with, with that. But we, we do need to, at the end of the day, that was only good for, for one year. And so it will expire next year and, uh, and we need to complete our Windows 10 and Office 2019 migration, not only from a security perspective, but from a functionality perspective. Uh, Windows seven and Office 2010 that we're currently using just doesn't have the features that, uh, the new product uses. So, uh, this is better all around. I was before you, uh, this year to approve the Microsoft enterprise agreement. Um, and that is, that is kind of our start of, uh, beginning of transitioning to more of a, a cloud-based approach. I, I'm not a huge, everything needs to go to the cloud type person. That's just not my, my, uh, my style. A lot of people are, they think, especially the sales and marketing people, they tell you it's going to solve all your problems and cure cancer as well. And it is just not. The, the thing is it works for, for certain, certain things. And, um, and it's, as long as you, you utilize and you understand the business. Um, and if there's a, a, a need for it and it makes sense in a use case, then, then you go to it. We have started buying some surfaces, um, in various departments. And a lot of times the technology that those services rely on, we just don't have on, on premise style network. And so we need to have that, uh, you know, my office, office 365 component, um, and OneDrive component to enable those features so that we can actually use the technology that we have more efficiently. So this is going to be really good. We've got 125 users that we can license for the Microsoft 365 platform. Um, and it's, it's, uh, it's going to be an interesting transition, um, but we're excited for it. The, uh, other thing, when I talked about the, the, uh, fiber optic, the, the infrastructure that we have. Uh, we don't have a, a full-on map. A lot of that map honestly is right here, um, which is not a good thing. People, people ask me like when I'm, when I'm, uh, like, oh, where's this fiber? And I just like, oh yeah, it's like right over here. It's on the side of the road, like what? So we actually need to have, um, a map of, of our infrastructure out there. And we started with the public works adaptive traffic that was kind of the, the push to kind of get us, uh, get a framework established and start doing that. And we've got a fair amount mapped, but we still have a lot more to go. Uh, so we're going to continue that. Uh, we also continue to support this safe city network, uh, with the grant. And, you know, just so that you're aware, I mean, there's, there's agencies or, or organizations like the Twin Lakes HOA that's coming to the city and saying, hey, we don't want cameras and we're going to pay for them. Well, a lot of it is, well, okay, that's, that's nice. Um, and that's, that's a really good thing that the city can help support. But also it does come at a, at a cost with staff time. So we have to balance, these are the things that we have to balance. Um, the Amanda seven upgrade, you know, we've, we've, you've heard the judge, um, as well as a day, uh, this year, or, uh, this, this, uh, during their budget presentations. Say how we have to start looking at replacing software that's end of life. Well, Amanda is one of those Amanda version six, uh, that's what we're on currently. And they are not going to be supporting it, uh, the kind of middle of next year. So we have to upgrade to Amanda seven to keep that support. And that's one of those things that was funded and it's funded by the automation fees. So when people buy permits, uh, or apply and pay for permits, uh, a portion of that, um, comes into an account and we can use that to upgrade the permitting system. And so this is a kind of a, one of those self-funded things. Um, and, and we're able to hire, uh, consultants to help us with this. So that way we don't, we're not doing a lot of the legwork. Um, and part of that is a, is refitting, um, folders. And that's how Amanda tracks processes. And the cool part about this is we are, when you refit a folder, you're changing the way that it behaves. And so largely Amanda is still using the same technology, um, and process that we set up back in 2007. And, and our business process has changed tremendously. And so this is going to not only upgrade the version, but also make sure that it, uh, it, uh, it behaves the way that it needs to. Unfortunately, um, you know, it, the Amanda system is kind of a four-letter word to a lot of staff. And, and this I hope will, will help alleviate that. And then finally, the, uh, annual replacement of hardware, PCs, printers, copiers, et cetera. We do have some continuing challenges, like I talked about the aging software, you know, just we're in, and, and the Eden system. Uh, these aren't things that, uh, the, the city has control over. It's either if you continue using it, you don't have support. And, and the vendors just do, they don't ask. They don't say, oh, hey, is it cool if we, we, uh, discontinue the software? They just, they just do it. It's on their They just they just do it. It's on their roadmap. It's part of their software lifecycle. So we have to, we have to deal with that. Staffing is always a challenge for us, keeping people, you know, as people leave, you've got institutional knowledge that leaves with them. And it's one of those things where we're kind of in a reactionary state, but we're we're looking with with, you know, IT IL. And a different help test system, we're looking to try and curb a lot of that reactionary approach. But it still doesn't help when you're when you're doing, you know, you got so much stuff, so many irons to the fire and and enough people to deal with. So that's that's always going to be a continuing challenge for a while. Behind the scenes, there's a lot of work that we as IT put into keeping the lights on. It's things that that we just have to do. It's kind of like the maintenance on your car, changing the oil. You got to do it. We have to upgrade the server software. We have to upgrade the version of SQL Server, our database system from from two thousand and five to to the current current version. We have to make sure that does. And and a lot of times the functionality remains the same. We're transitioning right now from Exchange twenty ten to Exchange twenty sixteen. And the chief asked me when when I was moving his mailbox, well, is this going to help me out? Not really. It's going to look a little different on if you log into Outlook online. But it's not going to be faster. It's not going to be better, but it's going to be more secure. It's going to be newer code. It's going to be what Microsoft supports. So we just kind of have to do it. There's a lot of this stuff that we do on a daily basis that just it it doesn't. Staff and and people just don't see it, but we got to do it. It's like every second Sunday of the month, we come in and we we install the updates on the servers and we restart them to kind of keep things fresh. And, you know, doesn't really do much, but it keeps things updated and it keeps them fresh. So. Security is always going to be a challenge. Security is is still going to be a challenge and definitely security is going to be a challenge. Speaking of which, we've got a couple of recent events. This this week I received some ACES as a kind of becoming full circle on on that membership that we that we are part of. On their listserv, Tyler Technologies, who makes Eden, the Eden product, got got hit by something. There the rumor has it that it's a ransomware attack to affect their phone system and their network, their computer network. And that's a big private company. I mean, they're they've got a lot of resources to throw at this and and they got hit with it. In addition, the Washington State, there's there's rumor has it that there's some agencies in Washington State where it's they've been getting hit either with. Whether it be a hack attack or if it's going to be some sort of a compromise ransomware. It's still a little unclear, but that that news came out today. And then also our north city, our neighbor to the north, the city of Renton. You know, back they 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 got hit in August and and that was not a good thing. They had to end up shutting their their systems down for quite a while. That's that's kind of like an Atlanta style ransomware attack. But but they're back up and going, but it's I spoke with with Mehdi, the IT director there and and former IT director here for for City of Federal Way. And he said it was one of the worst times of his life and 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 I agree. It's nobody deserves to go through that. On the on the on the coat tail or the end of that City of Renton thing, I sent out an email to all staff and council on August twentieth. And it had a link to a video in there and I was I was. I was kind of contemplating whether I could integrate that or embed that into this presentation tonight. And I figured, well, it's a four minute video and and I'm probably going to be at the end of the night. And sure enough, here I am. Probably not optimal to have you watch it, but it is that video, while fictitious completely. Is highly accurate as to how this works. And this is what we're dealing with. You know, this this ransomware is is, you know, ransomware is a service. People are buying it, you know, and and just say, hey, go attack this person and and they just pay him a fee. And and the other person that's that's doing it, the hacker is doing is this their day day job. They don't know any different. So these are the kind of things that we're up against. But I want to I want to say, though, with the mayor's proposed budget, the city will be taking a major, major leap forward. In terms of security preparedness to where we are today. So today is better than yesterday and tomorrow will be better than today. So that that is something that I want to underscore because while though there's no no FTEs, we got a lot of stuff for security. And that's where we really need to focus this coming year. I want to end on a lighter note. This is not part of your presentation. It was last minute ad, so my apologies. But at management team this week, we we were talking about some some older technology. And the mayor was discussing some of the technology that he was using when he first started his 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 professional job. And 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 I just want to say that this this I was walking in La Conera a couple of weeks ago. We were visiting there and there was a there was a store. And this particular photograph is a shirt that was hanging in the front door and I I just I love this stuff. I mean, I'm a complete nerd when it comes to that. But, you know, it reminds you that that with with the five and a quarter inch floppy disk in the top 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 left there. And the three and a half inch floppy, that that wasn't a world where we didn't have everything connected. You know, the everything's connected twenty four seven these days. And and when was the last time you shut off your router, your cable modem? You know, you've got you've got smart light switches and smart light bulbs that are all connected and they all talk on this 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 internet that we have. And and back in these days with with floppy disks, we didn't have to worry about that. You shut your computer off, you disconnect your modem. You know, and and you're safe. You didn't have to worry about people coming in overnight and and getting into your system and encrypting everything. So that you can't access it. And so that's what we're faced with today. And this budget, you know, is addressing the needs of of where we're at today. So with that, I will end my question and or my presentation and open up for questions.
Well, thank you, Thomas. Actually, boy, that's very interesting that you remember that where you guys where that issue came up about technology was we were talking about the time capsule. That we're working on, that we're going to do the Friday after the November election. And somebody wanted to put a thumb drive of pictures. And I just happened to say, putting a thumb drive in the in the time capsule would be put in what like like having an eight track cassette now. You would you there it'd be impossible to play an eight track now or or that that kind of technology. I actually, I actually told the group that when I first started in the Senate, in the state senate nineteen eighty nine, working for Pete thirty one years ago. Not one assistant in the legislature had a computer, not one. So it is fascinating how we're how technology has moved. But anyway, I digress. Sometimes, you know, I I think just in regard to security or or things like that, you want to go with something that's tried and true. With that, why don't we start? Here's the order. We'll have Councilor Moore, then Councilor Marissa Fadasan, and Council President Honda, and then Councilmember Berusso. Let's start off with Councilmember Moore. You're on.
Well, Mr. Director. Director, that's a, yeah, that's great. Director Thomas has a nice little ring to it. Congratulations again. We all know that you work extremely hard and that sometimes is an understatement. So great report. Oh, God, my iPad's about to lose battery. How about that? Let me plug it in. So from great report, I really appreciated it. And thank you for, I mean, clearly you have accomplished a lot, a lot. And and I'm just ever so grateful for all that you're doing. I'm glad that I was one out of many of my colleagues that supported the efforts of giving you more support. You know, I think in the last couple of years, we have seen a move on greater efficiencies. And investing in technologies from the Community Development Department to now your department, the Police Department as well, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm really happy to see that, the program investing in programs. The GIS system, I'm very curious about that. I wanted to see if you can dig a little bit deeper into that. You know, if I recall correctly, at one point, there was some sort of a discussion of, hey, we're going to get a program. That will help us do a lot of things, not just one thing, but a lot of things. Could this GIS system be an opportunity for us to create a interactive financial dashboard? Surprise with my question. I see Mayor Farrell is very shocked that I've asked that question. So that's my first question. Then I do have another, yeah.
To answer your question, I'd be I'd be completely lying to you if I said it couldn't. Ironically, there was Stacy, our GIS analyst, found a link to the city of Montgomery. I believe Alabama that is using the Esri dashboard, the same thing that you see that I showed you tonight. Obviously hugely souped up version of that and highly modified version. That that is basically taking an export of their financial system and putting it in beautiful little charts and graphs. And and things that you can click on and drill down deeper into. So. Yes, it's possible. It really is possible. And that was one of the things why I wanted to put the the Esri ELA or Enterprise License on there. Is because with the current setup that we have right now, we're limited on a number of server cores that we have. And and a lot of that comes back to the processing that it takes to actually produce that. And and of course, the people that are using the software were licensed, you know, are are licensed per per user. And so a lot of that has to do, you know, it was going to help us out for that. Not to say that it can't be done with what we currently have. We would have to make some additions. The ELA was going to make it easy. Now, that being said, it's it's no easy task. You have to take data out of a system and you have to massage it. And then you have to, you know, put it and and get it to graphically represent into a different one. So there is still a lot of labor involved in that. But but at the end of the day, yes, it is definitely possible. And and that's where that's where GIS is is going, especially with Esri. They it's not. It's not just making maps anymore. You can do a lot. That that system is very powerful. In addition to this, with our Microsoft enterprise agreement. I've got some licenses for Power BI Pro. And if you're familiar with Tableau, Power BI is Microsoft's version of Tableau. So it's a it's a very, it's a those are cool tools to be able to grab or represent data in in very interesting ways. And so Power BI is really going to help us do that. Now, the the difference is we don't have anybody really trained in it. Sarah Bridgford had 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 an employee temporarily that was highly intelligent at using Power BI. And she produced some pretty cool stuff. Now, I think Sarah has also wanted it and she probably heard, potentially heard my presentation and what I'm saying tonight and like, wait a minute, I didn't know we had this. So it is something that we just got. So there's a very long answer to your question. But yes, we we that is possible to do. Like I said, we probably have to make some additions there, but but it's doable.
Yeah, and and I appreciate that because I know I've been pushing and advocating for that for a long time. And and I appreciate, again, your thought process when looking at this. The GIS system, when you were talking about it a year ago, if I'm not mistaken, I don't remember exactly when. So so thank you for that proactiveness perspective of of how do we address not just one thing, but a whole bunch of other things. And just be a lot more to be more effective with people's tax dollars to make it go out and do more things. I'm not saying it's in a in a, you know what I'm trying to say. It's almost ten o'clock here. So we're good. So now, obviously, the next phase is is finding finding the time to to work on that. So that's going to be a fun adventure. But Thomas, I appreciate everything you're doing and and certainly there's a need for it and and with everything you're talking about. And I'm obviously I'll be doing everything I can to support you and and your department. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. And and again, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that it's all because of my team. You know, without them, you know, we we couldn't do any of this. So thank you.
Yeah, actually, Thomas, I'm so sorry, Mr. Mayor. I did catch you saying that you'll be offering two apartments with free Wi Fi. So how does that? How does that play with your department? How does that work? And and a shout out to the mayor and to Bill Vodino. You know, I know I've talked about how do we offer free Wi Fi? What else can we do to to connect students to internet to make sure that they have as best as possible experience with their academic this upcoming year? So Jim, thank you for for hearing me and running with it. I also thank Superintendent Campbell's time as well when we discussed that. So and just to clarify, this is Wi Fi, correct?
Yeah, and thanks for getting that started, Martin. Those and and Thomas has been working really hard with the school district and we had a couple of meetings. And I think everybody would be very pleased with how we're working with the school district to help our local students. Yeah.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, good.
That's okay, Thomas. Go ahead.
As I say, that we we are planning to do Wi Fi. We're planning to, you know, it's it's not going to be. You know, keep keep in mind, it's it's I don't want to set this expectation that it's going to be this world renowned service that we're going to be providing. You know, ultimately, this 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 system that we're going to be doing is is locate localized to those two apartment complexes. But they are highly dense. And so there's a lot of people in both of those apartment complexes. And so we're we're going to do our best to, as as I used in the in the meetings previously, paint that area with Wi Fi. Capacity is always an issue, not so much with the the amount of people that connect to an access point. But it's going to be kind of on the back end because eventually that's all still going to come over the city's internet connection. That we have limited at four hundred meg right now. So we may have to make some some enhancements there. But we'll see how it goes. I mean, this is a pilot project in in an apartment complex and or two apartment complexes. We're also bringing together, I actually just had a conversation today with Terry Davis. And he actually said that he spoke to him. And and he he also is is bringing to bringing forth a an opportunity that we might actually be able to get that. Remember, Mayor, that first apartment complex that they wanted to do, the one up by two seventy second? There might be an opportunity with with Terry's Terry's group that they might be able to do something with that apartment complex. So we're going to discuss that and flush it a little bit further next week.
Wonderful. Well, thanks so much, guys. Appreciate it. And thanks for your time.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Sephados.
Thank you so much, Thomas, for your presentation. Every time I hear you talk, as much as I I'm scared of IT department, I want to join your team. So thank you for that energy. My questions are, and you brought it up again, the Esri. Is that the JS enterprise agreement, that one?
Yes.
Yeah, so you said it's it will be forty six to forty eight thousand dollars with our current population. So if it goes over a hundred dollars, a hundred hundred thousand population, then this is going to change, right, the amount?
It it will change, and that's actually why it's a little different both years. So the way it works is a hundred thousand is the threshold. So Esri licenses it, we would be under a hundred thousand, and so we'd be paying that that first that lower payment. I don't have it in front of me, but. Yeah, and it's not, keep in mind, it's not, it's not forty six thousand because we're we're already paying a certain amount, so it's a little bit more than that. I don't have the exact number off, but this was the delta. This was the amount that we would need to be able to do that. So Esri was was forty six thousand dollars, forty, yeah, sorry, forty six thousand. And then and then and then year two would be forty eight thousand. The reason for that is if you're locked in or or you start your agreement under a hundred thousand and you surpass a hundred thousand. You still have to pay more, but you don't, you're you're kind of, they've got this pro rate schedule. And so up to about a hundred and fifteen thousand. And so until you get to a hundred and fifteen thousand, you can just, you know, keep on paying the lower premium. When you when you when you go above that, it does go to the next next level. And I think you'd probably be seeing about another twenty to thirty thousand dollars jump in price. So.
So that, yeah, that's so I think you're kind of touching on my question. If we were to go ahead and do it now, right? How long before we, unless our population does jump to a hundred thousand? What does that mean? I mean, would would we be locked at this dollar amount to where it doesn't jump next year? I mean, yeah, whenever the census comes.
So, yeah, you have to you have to do before the census. But, yeah, the the ultimate thing is the you 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 pay the lower price and then with a little bit of proration. So it it will be in a, I forget the calculation, but it's something like, oh, gosh. It's 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 for every thousand people you are over a hundred thousand. It has a certain amount and I just, the dollar amount isn't that much. It it's like in the hundreds of dollars, I believe. And and you just pay additional, you know, until until you reach that a hundred and fifteen, and then they kind of have to renegotiate you. So they give you that that. So they give you that, that little room, that flexibility to grow because some cities grow up a little bit and some, you know, lose maybe a little bit. And so they recognize that. And so that's how they structure that payment. So we would be, we would be paying a hundred thousand rate or under a hundred thousand rate with, with a proration add-on every year until we get to a hundred and fifteen and then they would renegotiate us. So.
Okay. Um, actually I did hear a report that federal is lagging behind on census, um, people registering, I mean, people doing the census. So I hope it doesn't go below the ninety seven that we're at now. Washington state is doing very well, but one of the cities that was identified as not doing so well is federal way unfortunately. Another quick point is, uh, when you talked about, um, training for staff like around IT stuff, I personally don't remember doing council training for, um, IT related software or, you know, like, like, and, and I do appreciate, because I have to do this for work, is all, all the different types of, um, phishing type of stuff or cybersecurity. If you've been doing it for staff, can you include us in that also?
Don't worry, that's coming as part of the mayor's recommended budget. Cybersecurity awareness training is coming everybody's way. So like it or not.
It's pretty affordable. It's ten thousand dollars. I, I'm really, uh, um, you know, I was really impressed. That was the first thing that we, we took a look at. I'm actually really excited about the AI piece of this, uh, that is really the, the dark trace. It sounds like a, you know, like a movie of the week or something, but uh, with, especially with the AI stuff, it's very interesting.
Great. Thank, I had a question about the fiber location, but I completely forgot what that is. So.
Yeah, if you, the fiber location was the call like eight one one before you dig. Uh, and so they would go out and locate our, our, our facilities, just like if you were, you see those markings on the pavement for water and power and gas. Same thing, it would just be for fiber optic.
Okay. I don't remember what my question was though, so I'll ask you later. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Um, now we've got, uh, Council President Honda.
Thank you, Thomas. So for the fiber location, we actually have to tell the locators where it is. They can't, they don't have a machine that locates it, the fiber?
Uh, EJ is the best, um, best resource for this. Um, but ultimately, our, our fiber, there's, I believe it or not, there's a lot that we put in the ground that does not have a locate wire with it. So the way, and, and again, EJ, EJ will, can correct me if I'm wrong. But uh, there's a wire, a very thin copper wire, so it's not valuable to thieves. That gets run through with the conduit, um, and the fiber. And then they hook up a battery and it energizes it and then they swing their little wand across it as they walk. And then that's when they paint all the markings. And so a lot of our fiber uh, does not have that. And so they would need to go in and, and basically put that facility, that, that wire in there. And then they would, they would, they would have a, um, uh, be able to paint those markings. And, and right now we, we don't have that in the majority of our, our conduits. So that becomes a, a problem. Um, and we, we don't have the tools to market and nor the, nor the expertise. So I think that's where the professionals, uh, one call, um, that's what Public, Public Works has contracted with to locate our facilities and like stormwater. Uh, they, they are the experts. So that, this would be an ad, um, so that they can do that work for us. Did I pretty much summarize, summarize that correctly, EJ?
Yeah. Um, so we are responsible for marking out city facilities. Once, so if a private homeowner calls in and says, hey, I want to go plant a tree in my front yard, the city is responsible for marking out city utilities. So this, what Thomas was talking about would be us marking out fiber. So right now, our fiber is protected. It's in conduit, um, and largely under the sidewalk. But right now we do not locate it. So when someone calls eight one one, we locate stormwater.
Okay. Interesting. I, I, I guess I just thought when you called that number, someone just came out and ran their little wand and identified whatever was, was buried in. That was it. So I didn't realize it was more complicated.
No, that's exactly what happens, but each owner of their facility is the one responsible for doing that. So we locate our stuff, just like PSC goes out and locates theirs or Lake Haven goes out and locates theirs.
Do you get off, calls often to do that?
Uh, we got about two thousand last year.
Wow. That must take up a lot of time. Okay, uh, learning things all the time. Um, so anyway, I, I have questions for you, but I'm not going to ask them tonight because I'm sure we're all tired and I have a list of questions for everyone anyway, all the directors. I just want to thank you for your support of council, uh, for our new iPads and, um, telephones and keeping us connected. You've done a really good job. I know I have bugged and bugged and bugged and bugged you for a long time, a few years. But uh, thank you for, for what you've done for us because you've made this COVID experience a much better experience for us, um, as a council to stay connected and to, to stay, um, our ability to get our work done. So thank you. I appreciate it. And thank your staff because I know they've been involved too.
Yes, they have. So thank, thank you. Appreciate the comments. And uh, there's definitely some of my staff that are watching tonight. So, uh, thank, thank you all as well.
Great. Councilman Berusso.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thomas, want to echo the same thing. Thank you to you and your staff for just, just making everything kind of flawless, really. And your patience too, when I have questions for you. So, but I do have a question on your unfunded, one of your courses, help desk technician. Is that, would that be a 24/7 position?
I don't think we can legally make somebody work 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Wrong call.
Just kidding. So the, the help desk position, um, yeah, if, if we, if we were to hire another, uh, help desk employee, the way that I see our department needs and the city's needs, um, is kind of that, that second shift, so to speak. So maybe, maybe it would be a, um, a, a, a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, uh, shift. And then they would be, uh, you know, afternoon to evening. So they can get not only the weekend, um, officers and, and the community center also runs, runs on the weekends. Their, their seven day a week operation too. And they, they also operate outside of normal business hours most, most days. So, um, it, it would be to, as a reference, as a, as a, as a tool so that we can handle those calls that come in. Because a lot of times right now, it's just you gotta take another car, gotta take another car. For the police in that, in that case. So yeah, if we, if we were to hire one, um, it, it's time that we have, we expand those hours and, and those days of work. So yes, it would be, it would be a, to kind of fill that gap a little bit.
Okay. And then on the help this, um, you have the help this software you've talked about. So if I call in, is there something created? Say that I called in and had a problem and then you would come back to me and then loop it back around so that that was closed out? So that's awkward, something like that?
Our system does that currently. Um, so if you email in or we manually create a ticket for you, it, it does have that communication piece. It's just very old and the tracking part of it isn't very good. So as far as if you call them with a problem with your iPad, we want to make sure that that's tied to that asset. You know, as an iPad, so we can see if you're calling in a lot, you know, oh wow, Councilmember Berusso is really calling in more than any other council member. Like what's going on? Should we, is there something that we can proactively do? So those are the tools that we just don't have right now. And, and so this new system will, will allow that. So we, we do have, we, we're not in the stone ages. We're not on like a, you know, a manually written sheet of, of everything that we, we do. And so you can email us and we can manually create a, a call. And then when we close it out, currently, um, it is the ability, uh, is there so that you're notified that, hey, your ticket was closed and here is the resolution. We would just be taking that to a completely new level. Um, so that's what we would do with it.
Okay. Just the last one then. So you talked about, um, annual training, especially security and things like that. You see it in the future, do, would we have something where you could have some type of learned management system where you would feed that off to all the employees, they do it, it would track it and you're, you're done at all? Are you looking for something like that? Maybe?
So the way that, um, the, and you're referring specifically to the part that is approved, um, as part of the mayor's recommended budget, right? For the, yeah. So, you know, I, I will, I will be looking, there's, there's several vendors that do, you do offer this. It's, there's, there's a long list of them. I get a lot of cold, cold calls on this. One that our city of Kent is using and that is kind of highly regarded is called Know Before. And they have the tools to be able to, to, to track, um, kind of who's doing it. Um, and, and, and make sure that, that there is an accountability, um, part of it. Is that kind of what you're looking for?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I guess that's, that's what we need because we need to be able to make sure that, that we're hitting our targets, making sure that we train staff. Because if we're missing, you know, even one person, if that could be the one person that clicks the link, you know, that, uh, that is taking us to our demise. So we, we don't want that. So we need to make sure that we're accountable and that we, we have staff accountability. So yes, that, that would be something that we want to look for. And actually I probably will engage, um, despite Gene not knowing about this, uh, HR, um, in this process because they, they do facilitate a lot of the trainings. Um, and so we'll take care of it from the IT perspective, but maybe from a, from a, um, just a reminder, oh, it's time, you need to, you know, go through this again. Maybe we can work with, with HR on that, partner with them.
Exactly. Right. That's awesome. Yeah. Thank you, Thomas. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, Councilor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Thomas. Um, I don't have, um, any questions, but I do have a compliment that, that I want to share with you. You know, you guys did a wonderful job for the city. You have a small team, but the work that you do is so critical. I mean, I look at, at your team as like, you are the heart of the city. And if this heart stopped beating, then game over, right? I mean, that's, uh, that pretty much. If you, if you remember my very first week, um, as a, as a brand new council member and I visited your team and, and at the time, uh, you know, know nothing about the city government. I already shared with you that I have a major concern about, uh, the number of IT staff that you have. And, and, and up until today, that, um, concern is still with me very much. If you remember at the last, uh, council retreat, uh, was that last January? Um, I know I wasn't there. I was in, uh, elsewhere. Let not go there. But I remember one of the, um, the council goal and vision was to make federal way become the technology hub. And, and you know, your team is very critical to help ensure we achieve that vision. So, um, today I'm going to tell you that, you know, I will work with the council, with the mayor, to do whatever I can to support, uh, you and, and your team.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, council, any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Thomas. Great job. All right, Jennifer, do we, uh, great job. Um, Jennifer, do we have any, uh, any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, not received any.
Okay. Okay. Well, um, that being the case, uh, we have reached the end of our agenda. Uh, council, great job. Uh, we will resume these. I believe it on our next, uh, council meeting on the sixth. Um, so, uh, thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice evening. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night. Good job.
Thank you, everyone.